This is Rita Chang from Northern Arizona University. I just put her up.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Arizona State Board of Education meeting. This is nine o'clock on September 5th, 2017. We are very happy to have you with us. Last week, I made a prediction about how long the meeting was going to last, and I missed it by a little bit. So, the only thing I'm going to say about this meeting is we're not planning on ordering lunch. Now, we'll see how well that goes, who knows? But, very happy to have you with us. So, for our opening ceremonies, we have Senior Pastor Jesse Lyles joining us this morning from the Willow Hills Baptist Church in Prescott. We appreciate him being here. And then, I will be happy to lead the pledge upon the conclusion of that. So, if everybody would rise, please.
Let me pray first. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for being able to be here today to get across the traffic. That was an exercise in patience. And so, Lord, we just pray that it'll be a good day here today. And, Lord, we do thank you for your presence here. And we know that many of these, well, these men and, we thank you, Lord, for these men and women who represent various interests across our state. We do know that you've placed them in their positions of authority here for the good of the people. We know they sometimes feel the weight of the responsibilities of their office, especially on days like today when there's public input. And, Lord, we do know that you'll help lighten their load as they trust you to guide them today. And we do know your word says, "By wisdom a house is built; by understanding it is established; by knowledge the rooms are filled with all precious and pleasant riches." And, Lord, we pray that, that a house of wisdom will be built in our school system. And pray through knowledge and understanding we'll engulf these leaders in this room. We pray that as a result of all of this, the administrators, teachers, students, and parents will all be blessed because of the efforts from this group and the various other administrators across the state. We thank you, Lord, for hearing the prayers of the school leaders serving our communities today as we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Pastor Jesse, thank you very much for making the trip. Have a safe trip home. Well, again, ladies and gentlemen, good morning.
Present. Member Calvin Baker.
Present.
Member Rita Chang. Member Daniel Koor. Member Michelle Kay.
Here.
Member Janice Mack.
Here.
Erin Taylor.
Present.
Member Patricia Welborn. President Carter, you have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. And I would remind everybody that the voting requirement is six board members. So, let's begin with a call to the public. Catcher, who do we have that would like to address us this morning?
President Carter, Superintendent Douglas, members. First up, we have Susie Ostmeyer from Kyrene Elementary School District.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have a document to share with the team.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Susie Ostmeyer. I am the Chief Information and Accountability Officer for the Kyrene Elementary School District. I have spent over 20 years in public education and can appreciate the difficulty in creating a letter grade system that is transparent and actionable. I thank you for not acting quickly and for taking the time to identify a model that our school communities can understand and respond, one that informs students of how well they demonstrate mastery to standards tested and provides teachers information that informs instructions. The current formula is robust and on many levels commendable for its intentions. However, in use, its use warrants caution. The complexity of the model results in letter grades that are not easily understood and can lead to inaccurate conclusions about school performance. A transparent model enhances public understanding and it builds trust. Actionable information allows school staff the ability to act upon results, thereby continuously improving student performance. Alternate ideas to the use of weighted systems, partial points or growth percentiles follow. Measure proficiency by pass rates with a tiered implementation schedule adjusting performance benchmarks annually so that expectations are increased over time and schools have opportunity to respond. Measure growth on the change in a school's overall percent of students passing from year to year until an assessment is identified and measures individual growth through pre- and post-testing so that the focus of measurement is on individual growth rather than peer comparison. Allow for the attainment and application of total number of points in any category for all students and schools and use all points in the final calculations so that students and schools are recognized for performance. Utilize a report card framework for letter grade reporting allowing each measure to be rated separate from one another so that stakeholders can clearly see how schools perform in various areas. What is difficult to summarize eloquently is the unintended consequence of creating a model that is so complex that students, teachers, and communities cannot use it to shape their understanding of the results. A weighted system makes it difficult to discern school performance. Student performance is obscured by, one, weighting highly proficient and partially proficient students; two, further weighting student performance by length of enrollment; and, three, placing a limit on the total number of points awarded in this category. In brief, awarding more points to highly proficient performance masks the number in the other performance bands, and awarding points to partially proficient students masks the percentage of students passing grade level expectations. I've included a table in your report to better illustrate this in a more detailed manner. The fundamental conflict with using the student growth percentile is that it does not result in a clear description of progress toward expected outcomes. Rather, the measure calculates this change in student performance relative to his or her peers. The student growth target is also misleading in that it does not actually illustrate whether a student is on track to meet grade level expectations. The additional weighting components do not allow for the full allocation of points for students who hold the same score but have different previous year achievement. To be clear, this measure places students and schools in competition with one another. It neither measures a student or school's performance to a criterion nor gives information that students and teachers can use to improve. The dependency on a peer comparison measure precludes students and schools from being able to take corrective action. A few examples were also included in your handout. Letter grades are a feedback loop. They report to students and teachers information related to student performance. I ask that you set the expectations high. Our schools and our students will respond. I thank you for taking the time to hear my voice and taking the time to consider the recommendations in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Carter, we also have Jan Vesely from the Superintendent for Kyrene School District.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Carter, Superintendent Douglas, and distinguished members of the Board. Good morning. Letter grades have purpose. The purpose of a letter grade is to boil down a student's performance on many small incremental activities into a single succinct and clear evaluation. Letter grades have meaning and ordinality. In the vernacular, an A means excellent and is better than a B, which means satisfactory, and so on. Letter grades should give the student an immediate picture of areas of strength or of weakness. Letter grades are meant to be a clear, realistic reflection of performance, of achievement, of quality. The reality is that if you adopt the model before you today, the letter grades will be none of these things. The proficiency points do not have clear meaning. AZ merit proficiency is determined by a scale score. So, rather than starting with a score that reflects how many questions a student got right, you've already moved one step away from a familiar territory. This is further distorted in your model by weighting the proficiency levels and then distorted by a third time by weighting how long a student has been at the school. The proficiency points do not realistically reflect students readiness for the next grade level. The growth points also do not reflect the reality of students' academic gains. Rather, growth points reflect how much each student's progress ranks against his or her peers. Make no mistake, the student growth percentile is zero-sum game. There can only be winners and losers. That is how it is designed. Let's be clear about how it works. SPG takes a scale score, which is already one level of abstraction from performance, and it looks at changes year to year. The scale increases each grade but not evenly, so 100 points of change at one end of the scale is not the same as in the middle or the other end. And the amount of change changes each year. We are now two levels of distortion. Then, the change in scale score is rank ordered against the amount of change made by grade level peers. Then, you introduce the SGT. This is not a reflection of students' progress towards grade level mastery. It is a measure that asks whether the rank ordered change, SGP, is likely to be enough to get the student to proficiency within three years. Unto both of these measures, you have further distorted reality by weighting this relative change based on where students started. The growth points are four to five levels of distortion away from clearly communicating students' academic gains and whether they are on track or not. The model before you does not reflect the levels of expectation set forth at the last board meeting. Students, teachers, and parents get no actionable information about areas of strength or weaknesses so that they can address those and develop learning plans to get kids back on track. There are too many levels of complication that frankly do not make the model better, fair, or more precise. They simply distort reality. These letter grades are so many steps away from reality and are almost meaningless, so I would ask for your consideration to create a letter grade system that is really actionable and understandable for parents, for community members, for districts, for schools, and for teachers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Becky Hill with the chamber is also here. President Carter.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, Superintendent Douglas, members of the Board. Becky Hill here this morning with the Arizona Chamber. First of all, thank you for all the work that you're doing to get this formula right. I know that timeline's out of whack, but the end product is more important than sticking to a predefined calendar. And I do think at every meeting, we are making progress. But, with your indulgence, I would like to mention, without being overly specific about resolution, just some of the issues that we think are still outstanding as you move forward. First, a couple of board members have astutely noted that there's been a robust, has not been a robust discussion regarding the definition of growth to target. We didn't really have a lot of time earlier to talk about this. It's something that has recently been raised that we think deserves more discussion. So, what is that definition in terms of, is it three years to get to target, four years, five years? And then, even beyond that, does the definition differ for students who are very far behind versus students who are already at grade level? Obviously, we want you to use the research as well as the experience of our schools closing the achievement gap to help find those answers. Whether or not we can get all the answers this year, or this is something we work on growing forward, please continue to ask those questions about growth to target and to do that work. Additionally, our student growth to target, meaning proficiency with incentives to grow past proficiency, we really feel like SGT should be at least equal to SGP, which it is in method two, so we appreciate that. But, we're suggesting you may want to visit a balance where SGT carries more weight than SGP because of the normative effect of SGP. One of the guiding principles from the field, the advocates, pretty much everyone, was that we look at absolute achievement and not just comparative achievement. Comparative achievement has a role in a grading system, but whether it's more than or equal to or less than absolute achievement, we think is a discussion that hasn't been fully had yet. Next, teachers and schools that grow students to the next grade level shouldn't be awarded with zero points. This won't make sense to parents or educators and is wrong. I understand that when, under proficiency, you get full points for proficiency. But, it appears in my reading of the tables that were published that if you're at the low end of growth but proficient, your growth to target points are zero. And I think that if you're keeping kids on grade level, even if their cohort ranking has slipped, again, we need to be very careful about telling teachers and parents that that's not worth anything. We absolutely want a system that incentivizes taking students to the next level. We think that was a problem with the prior A through F. We're not sure it's exactly right yet, so regardless of what you do this year, please continue having that discussion to honor our students, our teachers, and our schools. And then, lastly, something I've heard a lot in recent days, more so even than in the early weeks of this conversation, was looking at how the models compare to 2014 As. And I would caution you to not let that be the litmus of whether or not you've hit the right balance. We're three years removed from those groups of students. We have more rigorous content and a new test. So, although it's interesting, I'm not sure it should be the marker for success other than figuring out these other issues around growth and how to push our students, teachers, and schools forward. And then, I know I'm past my time, but I feel like I should just go on record and mention this morning that we all do this work because we care about kids and that schools allow every student, regardless of their immigration status, to achieve their dreams. But, I think this morning, we should all be especially mindful of those kids and families who face a great deal of uncertainty in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Carter, we also have John Kelly and Gary Bay who are here to talk about the AOF, AOI A to F timeline. So, we can take those now or we can have them present when that item comes up.
Let's go ahead and do them now, please.
Okay. John Kelly with Connections Education.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Carter, Superintendent Douglas, and members of the Board. It's my privilege to be with you. I know that we had a lot of this discussion last week. In your packet, of course, is material regarding the proposed AOI model timeline, which tracks pretty much what has been discussed, although a lot of this up in the air about alternative because we're still waiting for data, still waiting to look through and make sure we have a good product. At the last meeting, there was not sufficient time to really put together some of the feedback from the AOI Advisory Group, which consisted of both the full-time AOIs and those AOIs that are part of district schools. So, that, your packet now has a more full, I think, thorough explanation of why we do propose a continuation of the third model, the AOI model. I know there was discussion at the Board last week about the merits of doing so. I just wanted to make the clear point and have Gary sort of fill in that the statute does require that the Board consider pupil mobility in terms of the accountability framework for all the schools. And what was found in 2014 and 2013 in the development of the last model for the AOI specific was that there was some data anomalies associated with having the four-year graduation rate applied to the AOIs without some accommodation because we had a significantly disproportionate percentage of students who were not at grade level from the previous year that were coming in. So, we don't want to create a situation where the data is affected by that reality. And we want to make sure that when we look at the A through F grades for the traditional schools, that we don't have AOI schools disproportionately in the lowest 5% because that shields, sorry, conceals some of the problems we may have in the traditional schools. And it also potentially disincentivizes the AOIs who are providing, in some cases, a high school of last resort for some of the kids to take advantage of those opportunities. So, we just want to put that material in front of you. Again, we think the statute clearly provides for student mobility. The data has shown in the past that mobility has an impact on the OS disproportionately. We don't have any current ability to say that it doesn't anymore. So, for now, we'd like to continue to propose that we have a third model that substantially looks like alternative and traditional as appropriate.
Good morning.
For the record, I'm Gary Bay. I would just submit what John has said. The model was derived out of what the data demonstrated. We have no belief that that data has changed since the model was adopted in 2014. And that fact, in fact, the data will still demonstrate the same issues related to graduation rate impact, mobility impact, and even some of the applications of CCRI in terms of kiddos attending an online environment. There probably ought to be some other opportunities for those kids to demonstrate that they're ready for college and that their personal careers. So, with that.
Thank you, gentlemen. And just so that you're aware, when we get to that item, the Board may want to have you come back up so we can have more of a discussion.
President Carter, that are all the, those are all the public request comments.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that. So, the next item is a study session. This is not agendized for voting, so we won't be voting on any items today. It is simply a discussion to learn a few things and have an opportunity to ask questions.
President Carter, I just wanted to let you know that I've been on the phone. I wanted to wait for a break. This is Rita Chang.
Good morning, Dr. Chang. Glad you're with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Narducci, you're still with us as well, correct?
Yes, I am.
And Member Welborn, are you with us? Okay. Thank you. So, as we go, feel free to let me know if you have questions or would like to interject in the conversation. So, this is a study session, presentation, and discussion regarding revisions and setting cut scores on A to F accountability letter grades. So, Catcher, we're going to turn it over to you at this point.
President Carter, Superintendent Douglas, members, at the last board meeting, the Board directed AG to take a look at some more recommendations and directions and additional data and modeling. AG worked very hard to get that information and even harder to make sure that we got that information prior to the weekend for the Board's review. They also did provide some additional tables this morning that I'm sure they would be happy to go over, but with that, I would be happy to turn it over to Dr. Lasco Kerr and Wendy Davy to go over those slides and that data for you.
Okay. Ladies, good morning.
Good morning, President Carter. Members of the Board, Joe O'Reilly sends his regards. He's at the beach. I know I'm angry too.
There's something wrong with this picture.
I'm angry about that, too. If you don't mind. All right. So, we tried to add a little bit of humor, so this is A through F model analysis, part due. I don't speak French, so if I mispronounce that, my apologies to the French. Just to recap our goal and agenda for today, so the Board has directed AG to model data. The AG is presenting those outstanding issues for the Board to consider today. As instructed, AG will present some methodologies that address each of the outstanding issues that you raised, and then will present three cut score methodologies that the Board has directed us to model so that you can determine which best aligns to your policies around A through F definitions. As always, as you have questions, please feel free to stop and ask them. This is an incredibly long slide deck with a lot of data, and so I am happy to take direction from the Board if you want us to fast forward, go the easy way, or the hard way, whichever you'd like.
Dr. Lasco Kerr, let me suggest that, because much of this data the Board just received this morning, as you know, so we really haven't had a chance to review this latest group of data. So, my suggestion would be for you to kind of do the overview and then to talk specifically about what the points that the AG kind of concentrated your efforts on, and then explain the formatting, because as we talked earlier in the week, I think we were kind of looking at overlays where I could look at one item and then look at a second item in combination with it, and so on.
Member Carter, the materials that we just handed to you this morning are those comparative analysis tables. We do have the overlay of each of the actions independently in the PowerPoint and slide deck that you received on Friday. So, that's just secondary information that we'll be happy to walk through when we get to that point as well.
Okay.
So, in terms of the outstanding issues, we were asked to develop a model that allows schools to access the full range of points with respect to growth, to determine if there was a way to distinguish schools based on graduation rate, to give, create a way to give partial credit in the student growth to target calculations, to provide your pure grading methods and standard deviation method cut scores with no adjustments for the number of schools in each letter grade category. And you asked us finally to provide an analysis of those different models and a recommendation. So, that is what we are prepared to do for you today. Just to start us off on the right foot, so this is from your discussion last time around the goals that you have for letter grades. As we understand them, to minimize the impact of wealth and poverty on the letter grade, that all schools should have the potential of getting an A rating over time, not that all schools will be an A rating when we issue letter grades this year, and that these letter grades should represent these particular types of descriptions. So, again, as we talk to you about the different cut score methodologies, we are trying to use this as the backdrop to the way we analyze the data for those cut scores. We understand that you're still having conversations and submitting information to Board staff around the exact language of those descriptors, but, you know, that's the material that we had to go with. So, jumping into the K growth rate weighting methods, again, just want to, for the audience, know that we use the term weighting, but at the end of the day, it's just a way to talk about how points get calculated for schools. So, to establish that nomenclature, this is the model that we presented to you last time. We're calling it Method One, where we adjusted the weights for the student growth percentiles and the student growth targets. You can see that student growth percentiles weighted at a two for the highest weight and 1.3 for student growth target. Concerns that were raised by the Board at the last meeting were that SGP is more heavily weighted than SGT and that in this model, the student growth target was an all-or-nothing calculation. So, then, in response to the Board's request, we modeled adjusted weights for both SGP and SGT, giving more weight to the average growth category, which is that the category of a student growth percentile between 33, or rather, 34 to 65, as well as assigning partial credit or the ability to create an add or near score for the student growth to target. In this model, these weights are identical between the two so that you'll notice, you know, identical parity. know, identical parity. And the at or near grouping is established by creating a target, a band around the student growth target for every student that is plus or minus 10 points instead of y'all or nothing. And I'll pause because I think Member Mac.
Yeah, I had a question. In addition to the state board goals that are stated in the PowerPoint, Member Taylor also brought up a concern that the system would not be punitive to any one group. And then Member Baker brought up at the last meeting, the concern about being comparative in nature. And that was definitely a goal that was stated as well. So I was wondering if that was guiding your work as well.
Thank you, Member Mac. Yes, absolutely. We've done an extensive amount of analysis, as you can see throughout the, the packet and the details. And then secondarily, we're analyzing, you know, just to be sure that we weren't creating a system that negatively, you know, affected any group of schools, high performing schools, high growing schools. You know, obviously, if you're low performing and low growing, it's not much we can do about that because the model is designed to evaluate your performance. But yes, we absolutely were conscious of those concerns and tried to, within the framework that we have, make adjustments where we could. And by all means, feel free to jump in and continue to kind of adjust in that direction if you feel like you need more explanation on something that I'm presenting. So what we thought we would do first is to handle, provide you a comparison between the two models so that you can see, conceptually, you know, you can see the, the differences, but also see the impact. And then we'll go into the actual, the iterative impact on the accountability system. So this is a side-by-side of the two S G P methodologies, Method One on the left-hand side, Method Two on the right-hand side. Again, the differences in the weighting so that you can just kind of keep those two pieces straight. And you can see overall in terms of the comparable distribution, they're, they're quite comparable. The means and standard deviations hang together pretty closely. Obviously, Wendy Davies is here as well. She can jump in and provide any more detail. But you can see that the distribution for the right-hand side becomes a little more spread out. We do get a larger distribution on S G P math, and the E L A seems pretty comparable. The outliers tend to hang in the same place as they were before. Just as a very high level for the audience, because we know that those are teeny tiny slides, here's just a big, high-level summary of the impact of those two particular methods for student growth percentiles. So you can see the means, standard deviations, and the ranges between Method One and Method Two for math and for reading. So by making those, you know, incremental adjustments to the weighting system for just the S G P calculation, you can see that we, we do see modifications between Method One and Method Two, but not, you know, huge swings in terms of the performance of schools. And Wendy, feel free to jump in if you want to add anything. K eight S G T methods, again, just so that you can see the side-by-side of each of the independent methods, and then we'll start to, to build this ship as we go. So Method One, just to recap, was the all or nothing, weighed at 1.3. So proficient students got a full credit, or I'm sorry, highly proficient students got a full credit. Proficient students got 1.1 credits, partially proficient 1.2, and minimally proficient 1.3. And then Method Two, which was the attempt to create partial credit or create that at or near band. Obviously, as we create a new band, we have to create new weights and associate new calibrations to that. And we chose to, in Method Two, mirror the weights of the S G P Method Two to address those concerns. And you can see that a student who is highly proficient and growing at a high rate above the target, so 11 points or greater than the band around their student growth to target, receives full credit in the model, as does a minimally proficient student who's growing at or near their target. That plus or minus 10 is really what we would consider the standard error of measurement around the particular student target. So just to recap, that student growth target is the value that a student needs to be proficient in three years if they are not yet proficient. So minimally proficient or partially proficient has a target to proficiency in three years, and the S G T is the, the numeric value. So when we say that you're now at or near plus or minus 10, if that student's target is 50, they're going to get credit in that at or near band for a score between 40 and 60. So that's a, kind of a wide band, and that's true in all of those categories. I do need to correct myself for the record. In the past, I have presented to the board that the target for a proficient student was highly proficient. It has come to our attention during our conversations in preparation for this meeting that that is not the case in the data that we've modeled, that the target for a proficient student in the analysis and the underlying data that we've been using is actually to proficient over the next three years. So maintaining and staying on par.
So thanks for that clarification. So let me just give you a scenario and tell me the correct answer. So a student is at proficient. The next year, that student moves to highly proficient. What's the target now?
The highly proficient student's target is to maintain highly proficient over three years.
Okay.
So that's the, the student is to not slide back, if you will, in terms of their growth to target.
Okay. Other questions?
President Carter, just to follow up on that question. So then, if that is the case, then that student, over the three years, should he or she maintain highly proficient, would get what points?
If the student maintained highly proficient, so again, depending on where their individual growth to target was, if they were at or near, they would earn that 0.5. If they were above, so 11 points or greater than their target, they would earn a 1.
So they are not earning full points if they're maintaining their highly proficient status, for lack of a better word?
They are if they're above their individual target.
But if they're at?
If they are at or near their target in this model, they're getting, they're getting a 0.5.
There has to be another question there.
So that student, Member Mac, is getting a 1.3 weight for proficient, for, on the proficiency calculation, and they're getting a 0.5 weight if their band is plus or minus 10 around their target. So yeah, a highly proficient student who's doing more, making 11 points or greater than their target can earn a 1 point in this calculation. Remember that that, that target is established, when we had the all or nothing, that student made a 1 point. But because we're now establishing sort of a standard error around the target, which means that that student actually could earn less than their target and may not stay on track, that's true for any of those performance levels, they're not earning the full credit. In Model One, they were earning full credit for maintaining, you know, hitting their target, being at or above their target. But if my target is 50 and I actually earn a 40, and I'm a highly proficient student, I'm not meeting my target, but now we've given them that standard error around that target.
President Carter, I just, I could foresee huge issues with that as far as, I mean, I don't want to speak too much now until we see everything else, but just, point taken. Thank you. And thank you for all your work.
Any other questions before I go on?
Please proceed.
Thank you. So this is just, again, a high-level summary, mostly for the audience, since we don't expect them to be able to read the teeny tiny graphs. And so you can see the difference between the average scores and the standard deviations. When we allocate an at or near group, that's Method Two, and again, distribute those points differently, where the highest value is a 2, we're in the previous set. Again, just to go back, the highest value was a 1.3. It's not surprising that the means increased pretty significantly. And the standard deviations hold together pretty closely, and the range is impacted, right? So we have significantly higher range of points in Model, or Method Two, in this calculation than we did in Method One.
And they would go higher if everybody do a 1?
And we did, Wendy, you.
President Carter, board members, I just want, we didn't put it in here, but we did give where everybody would get a 1. So when you look at that distribution chart where everything starts going up to the high end, if you start putting 1 in that middle column, everything's skewed up to the top, and you lose that discrimination that we were fighting to get. So if you look, if you go back to the, can you, there you go. So if you look on the right side, you see how it's a little bit in the middle high. If you start giving 1 in that middle column, that all shifts up even higher, and you lose the discrimination. And again, it goes a little bit higher to, your F R L correlation will go up as well.
And from a calculation standpoint, the student has already lost whatever proficiency level they had under the model that didn't give partial credit. Is that correct?
If we were talking about a highly proficient, they would still be getting the full 1.3 on the proficiency side. But President Carter, I may have misunderstood your question.
I'm talking about the, the situation where students were scoring zeros.
Right.
At that point, they've already lost whatever proficiency level they had if they had a zero because of the scoring, where with the partial points, the concern was raised about them losing that proficiency level they had already effectively lost it with a zero.
Yes. And, and as you can see, we didn't make any adjustments to that zero threshold here. So again, just to reiterate, you can see that the, the distribution shifts upwards. And if we kept adding points in that middle category, that would just continue to compact up at the top. And just to remind the board and the audience that we also, in addition and above and beyond this, have caps that come in after the fact. So even though we have ranges into the 124 and 113, you know, we're capping these, these data at 50 as a combined set, right? So there's a potential of earning a lot of points in the model, in both of the models, frankly. But we're, we're capping it by the nature of the number of points that the school can In terms of combining things, again, just so that you can see how the models were working so that when we start to show you the impact of the data, hopefully it starts to, or it makes some sense to you. So this is combining both the S G P and S G T methods. So Method One is the all or nothing S G P, or S G T, and the incremental weights. And then Method Two is the at or near with the same common incremental weights. And you can see here that the distribution does shift up towards the, the top of that, that 50 points. So that, again, not surprisingly, when we saw the individual components, S G P was earning a little, a few more points. S G T earned a significant number of more points. When we add them together, Model Two performs in the way that we would expect, in that the means shift up almost four points. And then everyone, you know, just, there's still a, a nice spread in terms of distribution, but certainly a shifting up of those points. And here's the high-level summary for the audience. And we're capping the points at 50, so no matter how many points above 50 a school earns in the, the two components, the maximum they can earn is 50. It's where, you know, when Member Mac and others have been concerned about the potential for adverse or, you know, deleterious effects on our high-performing, high-growing schools, we certainly don't see that when schools have the possibility of earning 130 points in each of the components. When we combine those together, you know, we've got, again, if you look at the distribution, a good number of schools that are hitting maximum and/or close to maximum points here. We did also look at the correlation to poverty between these two complete methods. So S G P, S G T combined in Method One, and the two components combined in Method Two. The proficiency calculation is identical between the two methods because we didn't change the way we calculated proficiency. That is the relationship between the points earned in the proficiency calculation in the elementary model to free and reduced lunch. You can see that is an incredibly high negative correlation. The growth calculations between the two of the methods are very low correlation, so the relationship between growth and poverty is very low in both of the methods. And you might also notice that there's just a, you know, fractional difference between Method One and Method Two in terms of the growth calculation and its relationship to poverty. But at the end of the day, what we're, you know, also very much concerned about is when those two things are combined, how does the overall formula hang together? So again, to Member Mac's point, to Member Baker's point, we want to make sure that we're creating a system that is fair, that is valid, that it is reliable, that measures the impact of the school and not simply the demographics of the population of students that they serve. And you can see with either one of these methodologies, we end up with a correlation to poverty that is what we would consider moderate. And of course, we're never going to eliminate the relationship to poverty. That is, you know, an aspirational goal that is not able to be accomplished, certainly not in our data set and with the information that we have. But we feel like these are, are, are numbers that are really quite sound when we think about the overall formula together. Questions before I go on?
Oh, I think you need to proceed, please.
All right. It's always a little scary when there's not very many questions. All right. So then to the total score impact, we go. So this is all things included in the system, so proficiency, E L L, acceleration, and the growth methodologies. So again, just so that you can see how these things hang together before we get to the actual distributions. You can see that we see a shifting up of the distribution of points. The means go up pretty significantly between the two methods. Standard deviations stay pretty comparable. Again, the maximum number of points exceeds the total number of points earned, and so we still cap at the maximum number. Those extra credit, those extra points don't serve any other function in the system. And so again, just for the audience, you can see the, the difference here. So Method Two has a slightly higher mean. Again, that distribution shifted upwards towards the, you know, total cap of 100. The standard deviations are comparable, and the range is comparable. So before we get into the actual analysis of how it looks incrementally on the potential distribution of F, A through F letter grades with the various methodologies, we wanted to pause and give you our recommendation on which methodology we think that the board should be leaning towards. Of course, it's only our recommendation. The board has, you're welcome to do whatever you'd like. But we prefer Method Two to calculate growth for elementary and high schools, and these are our rationale. We believe that Method Two best addresses the concerns that were raised by the board, that it provides differentiation in that student growth to target calculation in terms of dealing with that partial credit that was requested. The method uses comparable weights between S G P and S G T, which makes the method more clear and transparent, especially for a K-12 system, whether that's a unified school district or charter school that has grades across both bands, that those are, are the same weights, and they're the same across elementary and high school. Makes sense to us. It addresses the concern that was raised about overweighting of S G P with Method One. It increases the amount of points that schools received in terms of their average growth, but while still maintaining a reasonable correlation to poverty. So of the two methods that you have, we would recommend that you highly consider Method Two.
President Carter, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When it says the Ag unanimously prefers, does that refer to the entire group with the members that are listed on the first slide? Did everybody vote?
That includes the people who were able to make the phone call.
Which was how many out of that group?
I don't remember.
It varied between 11 and 13, depending.
Yeah.
Okay.
All of the group that had access to the data were, received the information after the call, and I have not received any communication from any member of the group that they don't agree with the materials that we put together.
So just for clarification, that's 11 or 13 out of approximately 24 that are on the list. So just barely half.
Not all of the 24 do, I believe, have data sharing agreements and have access to the data at this time. So that was a secondary step in order to get access to the data for this last round of analysis, but we do want to value and honor all of the time that the full lag created. I think typically.
I think there was only, we'd have to check with A D E, but I don't think.
Yeah. That, that whole list is, not everyone has access to the data. So we're not able Yeah. That whole list is, not everyone has access to the data. So we're not able to share it with the full Ag, even if they're on the Ag.
Okay.
President Carter, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many people regularly attend the Ag meetings?
I would say, I would say... On average, we probably have between 15 to 16 people on a call. You have to remember that these are people who have their own full-time jobs. And so we've had three calls in the last four days when we're starting to model data. So, you know, there are certainly tight timeframes and not everyone, you know, can jump in on a call. But we do try to share everything electronically with people as soon as we have them available and ask for feedback.
So is there any kind of minority report from those folks that just might not agree?
I think there's concerns of that experience.
To be clear, there are always differing opinions when we have conversations about data. So that is, that's true. That has been true throughout the entire process. But there are, when we have come to consensus on a particular recommendation, as an example, you know, one of our members, can't remember if it was this recommendation or another one, that you'll see said, you know, "While I prefer X, I will go with a group for consideration", you know, for the board. So as each individual member clearly has their own opinions and is looking at data, when we ask for a consensus, you know, we try to get that. And in this case, it happened to be that of all the people on the phone, for our phone call, they were, they all agreed that method two is the preferable method.
And President Carter, I would like to add too that several of us know that this is going to be revisited.
Yes.
So in light of the time that we had, we also know that it will come back and we will look at a better model. And some of those concerns that we have as an individual district, we know that we'll be able to address them as well as the process continues.
Well, I'm only speaking for myself, not the board. But it's always, I look at my leadership team, we've got eight people on that group. And every one of those eight people know that in the privacy of that room, they can tell me I'm absolutely wrong. And here's why you're wrong. And here's why we should be doing it a different way. At the end of the day, a decision's going to be made and we're all going to walk out of there and say the same thing. But because people are willing to say, "You're wrong, and here's why you're wrong," that makes us all grow and look at things differently. So I'm going to step out of tradition a little bit. We have a few folks in the room who I think are members of Ag. And if any of those folks would like to come up and give us a different view, the board would be more than happy to listen to it. Just need your name and school.
Good morning, President Carter, members of the board, Superintendent Douglas. Yeah. My name is Rebecca Bolnick. I'm the Director of Accountability for the Kyrene School District. I would like to state that while what Ildy said about our consensus on the call was true, I would, I think I speak for several members who would say that we preferred this based on what data we had at the time. There, of course, is limited amounts of time to model and limited amount of data. I think there are definitely members of the Ag and members of the community that are very concerned about the SGP. And frankly, to address a question that was raised before, the SGP and the SGT do rank students against each other. There is no way under this growth model for everyone to get 100% or anything like that. There is always going to be someone at the top and someone at the bottom. The other thing that's really important to remember is that this method does not, it does, it has no bearing on a student's actual progress through proficiency levels. There was a lot of questions about, you know, if a student is highly proficient, then they stay highly proficient. Or if they're proficient, they grow to highly proficient. Or they're minimally proficient. These methods don't have almost any bearing on that. The SGT gets closer. But to be clear, the SGT relies on the SGP. The target that you have to hit is based on, is based against your SGP, which is a measure of your change against your peers. So as a student, if you go up a proficiency level, I can't tell you right now whether that's going to result in a high SGP or frankly, whether it will result in you meeting your SGT. Because it depends on how everyone else, how all the other students in the state did. I just want to make sure that everyone is really clear on that point. I know that it's several months now past the decision to use that as the growth measure. Now whether that can be revisited at this time is for you to decide. But that is what the model does. And so the concern that was raised about how do you communicate to a parent, to a teacher, to a student, here is the target that you need to hit, the answer is you can't. Because as, when a student starts out the school year, and we're doing this in Kyrene right now, we, I was working with teachers, I gave them a visual of the scale score and the scale score and the proficiency levels and how it changes over, you know, each grade level. And they are taking that handout and they are going and meeting with students and setting targets. The students are, you know, they're having their own self-actualization. They're setting their own targets for where they want to be on the scale score. That, you can't do that with the SGP. If I say to you that you need to hit an SGP of 65, what does, what does that look like? We don't know. And we won't know until the end of the year. So there are, there are quite a few members of the Ag who have some serious concerns with the practicality of these metrics. The statistics are fine. But when you take statistics and you put them into the real world, sometimes they just lose all meaning. And so sort of in summary, yes, I would say that of the people who are on the call, generally preferred, and to your, to your point, President Carter, you know, we said, this is where we're at. This is where we're willing to go at this point with the group. But there are many lingering concerns about the complexities that are imposed in the model, the fairness. All of the points that you've raised, we share them.
So a question, and maybe you can't answer this at this point. What would you and the group of like-minded folks recommend?
We've had some sort of pie in the sky discussions because of really the timeline and where things are right now. But frankly, amongst those discussions has been really, why are we using an SGP and an SGT? It's not actionable for anyone. It pits students against each other. And frankly, it really doesn't differentiate any better. It doesn't tell you anything better than simply, you know, some sort of looking at scale score change. And yes, there's differences and all of that. But this is, this is lining kids up against each other. And we struggle with how to explain that to our parents, to our communities, and to our teachers. Now, what the alternative would be, I think you would want to make sure that you're very careful about moving forward with something like that. So, I mean, I think that you would need a little bit of time to propose an alternative. But this, we're not the only state to have thought about this. And we're not, this isn't the first time that this question has come up. So I'm sure that there's, there's plenty of models we can look to.
Well, personally, I appreciate your comments. Remember, the big decision that you're talking about was decided back in April.
Right.
So I wish we had had some more of these conversations, maybe in February and March. But that decision has been made. And time has never been our friend. And to be quite honest, as of right now, September 25th is the date that we're planning on making a decision. And there's so little time that that's probably the date we're going to have to stay with. So we appreciate that. And one thing that I would like to request in the future, and this is for the entire Ag, and we greatly appreciate the time and energy and effort that you folks put into this. But I, at least from my standpoint, having that kind of like a minority report, you know, here's what the consensus was, but here's the rest of the story that you need to know about and other potential options, I would find that very helpful. So thank you. Other members of the Ag that would like to make comment? Okay. Dr. Kerr, I think we're back to you. Let's continue, please.
Uh, Member Carter?
Yes, yes, sir.
So part of this, I mean, we're sort of stuck at a crossroads because the decision was made a long time ago to do SGP and SGT. And now we're seeing difficulties with that. And so the question is, what do we do? And I don't have an answer for that. But I want to, I want to point out and get clarification on one issue. I mean, I struggled with these methods to begin with. But I, I was under the impression that SGT was set against a specific standard. But what I've learned over the last few days, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I think I heard it just in the testimony again, Becky Hill spoke this morning to the fact that SGP is normative. But isn't SGT also built on a normative foundation?
So, Member Carter, Member Baker, SGT is, in concept, a ranking of SGP scores that are necessary to hit the criteria that's been established. In the model that ADE is running, the target, the criterion for a student who is not proficient yet minimally proficient or partially proficient, is the scale score for proficiency. For a highly proficient student, the target is the scale score for highly proficient, and it is the bottom of the scale score range. So the target is a criterion. The evaluation is whether or not, how much growth do they need to make? So what's an SGP value they need to make in order to be on track for that target by currently three years? You know, the question around, is three years the right number of years to get to target, is a conversation we really haven't had. And what we know from the department is that their contract with Dr. Biedabender is that it's calculating currently based on three years. The board eventually wanted to make that four or five years. That is something that, that can be adjusted. But the criterion, the target is a target. The growth percentile that is needed is calculated based on where a student starts, how far they are away from the target. It establishes a slope. And some student slopes are very steep because they're very far away from the target. So therefore, they have a very high SGP calculation. Some student slopes are very shallow. That's not the opposite of steep, not steep, because they're very close to the target. So they don't have to have a very high growth percentile to get there over three years. So I'm not sure if that answers.
Can you address individuals?
Pre...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The bottom line issue is, you still cannot define exactly what a student has to do, where they have to go for the entire growth scoring. And that, that is a, I just didn't understand that, my bad, until the end of last week. So the significance, one of the significance of that is Friday, we hosted a data dig for some of our Beyond textbook partners. So we had a room full of charter school and district people from across the state. And digging, they each had their own data, and we led them through a process to tear it apart. And, and to come up with observations and, and set their instructional targets for the upcoming year. And I sat through most of that. And as, as was indicated earlier with some of the testimony, the level of complexity is so significant. In fact, Member Taylor was joking about getting an education on actuarial tables. And it, it feels that way when you're taking the data apart. And at the end of the meeting, the activity was for every group, there was a group from every charter and district to say what their main takeaway was. And for each one of them, almost every one of them, the main takeaway was, we need to grow all kids. Well, that's, that's okay. That, I mean, that's a, that's a good takeaway. But no one was able to say, here's the specific buttons that we have to push in order to get a better grade. It's just sort of like, we all have to try harder. And I, that just bothers me. I wish we could, somebody, somebody at that meeting talked to me afterwards and said, you know, when we get our budget numbers from ADE and we don't agree with them, we can look at the numbers and then we can work backwards and we can figure out where the numbers came from. We know what happened. Or if our ADM numbers we get from ADE, we don't agree with them, we can work backwards through the numbers and we can figure it out. It's all, but with the system that we're currently on, that can't be done. Because there's this magic formula out there somewhere that does all the calculations that, that we don't understand. I didn't get it after spending almost a year on it. Finally figured, oh, it's normative. I didn't, I didn't realize that. President Carter, I spoke with him, he had it figured out. But I didn't have that. It, it just, for, for the, for the benefit of our teachers and our principals, I, I wish we could be clearer with them on how this all works and what it is that they need to do to improve achievement for their students.
Other comments? Yes, ma'am.
President Carter, I joined the board in April, so I don't have the benefit of some of the history, mostly what I've heard from other stakeholders and what my organization has followed. I guess one of the questions I have, because I don't disagree, this is complex. It is confusing. It is difficult to really try and figure out what the target is. However, I'm a little perplexed right now because we've been using SGP for years. You know, we're going back prior to this round of grading, I believe SGP was part of the original formula. So I'm wondering why the discussion now, and maybe there was some discussion around it in the ad hoc meetings and how we ended up with the framework we did. Can you provide any?
Scale scores.
Historical?
Well, I can give you recent history. There were at least two significant meetings of the ad hoc committee where that was really the focus, this model versus a scale score slash Florida type of model that is a student against themselves. And there were lots of different views. A lot of this information surfaced, some of it did not. I've heard some information in the last three weeks that never surfaced during the ad hoc committee meeting. And how that happened, I don't know. I mean, we met hundreds and hundreds of hours. But at the end of the day, this was the model that was proposed to the board. And this was the model that indeed the board approved. And because of the timeframe, I believe this is the model that we need to proceed with. Now, what happens in the future, and the fact that we're going to be reviewing this on an annual basis, may be a huge benefit. But it may be too early at this point to decide exactly what that would look like.
Okay.
And that's, that's my view. Yes, sir?
Again, I don't have an answer. But what we do hope to accomplish here is setting a methodology and hopefully scores that, that stabilize so that schools can look with... So the, the problem with going forward with a model that we are not truly comfortable with is to have the mindset that we can change the model next year means that... with is to have the mindset that we can change the model next year means that the whole fruit basket gets upset again, and we, and we have this fluctuation where, because we changed the model, an A school goes to a B, and a C school goes, and, and everybody goes, well, what, you know, it's a mess. So, yeah, it, all things being equal, it would be better to make the right decision now, even if it causes us some pain now, rather than to make a decision we're not comfortable with and then try to change it all up for next, for the following cycle.
Piggybacking on what Cal just said, I believe I attended every public meeting between the finalization of the ad hoc and it coming to the State Board in March in rural Arizona. I didn't come to any in Tucson or Phoenix. And in every one of those meetings, there were at least one, and in most cases numerous folks, everybody from parents, but specifically school administrators and testing coordinators and principals, who said, "Please pick a system that is easy to understand and easy to explain, and then we'll accurately measure where we are, and where we then, as a team, can sit down and make determinations as to how we get better." And my concern at this point is, with this system, I don't think we're going to be able to achieve that right now.
I would agree.
So other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Dr. Kerr, if you would, proceed, please.
Did you want to say anything else?
We were just going to address, I know you were talking about SGT, President Carter, board members. We have been able to look at our individual data, some of our districts. And in regards to SGT, as you see, the points there were gathered more was the fact that a student could have an SGT of 25. So where they may not, on an earlier, they still would have been getting points. So you have such a variety of the points that they have to hit. So that by doing that three levels, it's not usually an all or nothing like it was before in a yes or no, because I actually do have students in the file that had a 15, a 25, or a 33. Yet before, you know, if they had a 32, it was a yes or no, and now they were getting those points. So, again, when you have that kind of variation, you see that slight increase in FRL. And each time, we make it a little bit simpler. If you remember back to the ad hoc committee, that FRL correlation goes up. Every time we simplify it, it goes against what we were, one of the main goals is to not, you know, go against our title schools and some of the challenges they have. We have the same challenge as Kyrene and the Charter Association. I have principals, 42 of them, that have varying levels of capabilities with numbers. We work with them to understand the model. I work with them, some don't need me, some do. We target grade levels. I help them understand where their numbers are. Then they go back and they work with their teachers. We concentrate on our teachers teaching to the standard, not understanding the school labeling system. If they are teaching to the standard and achieving standards, the rest of it comes naturally. And I think sometimes the label has gotten in the way of understanding what our teacher should be worried about. I just got on soapbox, I'm sorry. You know, that, that's our focus.
Wendy, this is a study session, you can kind of get on your soapbox, it's okay. We're all trying, this is a community of learners, we're all trying to learn from each other. I, I think the frustrating portion is that, that principal would really like to be able to explain to that teacher, here's what you as a classroom teacher with this group of kids need to do this year. And that teacher then needs to be able to explain to those students and those parents, here's what we need to do collectively this year to get where we want to be. And, and I'm, I'm finding that harder and harder to think is going to happen. And it's, nobody's pointing a finger at anybody, it's just the system. And so...
Member Carter, I'm happy to volunteer to create a training series for the state to help people understand how to use student growth percentiles and student growth targets to train their teachers. I've had a fun time doing it for the last couple of weeks with some of our charter members, and I can tell you, my experience is, once we share the interaction between proficiency and growth and understanding of where a target is, what they're able to see is a student who's in the minimally proficient category that is making no growth compared to their academic peer group, but we want to get to proficient by three years, we have to do an incredible amount of, you know, support and intervention and high-quality teaching and learning to get them there. And frankly, once you start with that lens of, what do we need to do in terms of the standards, where are the students deficient, how much movement do they need to make? Honestly, teachers get it quite quickly. But again, I would say the majority of the Ag continues to recommend SGP and SGT with all of its warts. We know that there is no model that's perfect. We certainly, we are very excited to look forward to adjustments for next year. One of, you know, the things we've talked about a lot, and Member Baker was very brave in asking us for partial credit, the decision to do three levels instead of four or five levels, right? We could really isolate students who are making between zero and 10 percentile points and saying, goodness gracious, that's an incredibly low amount of growth, but give everybody else some kind of incremental credit. That's something we can look to for next year so that we don't have a third of the kids, if you will, at the state earning no credit in the system. There are lots of places still to, to improve without throwing a baby with a bathwater. We're excited to do that with you. We'd just like to get this one done first so that we can know where we're going.
President Carter?
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you for that. And, and I want to express to, you addressed the issues that we asked you to address, so I want to acknowledge that. It's, it's really the foundational issue that, that we're talking about. And here's the reality, again, with my new understanding that both of them are normative, if you did your training, and if everybody attended, and everyone was successful, the bottom third of students would be restricted to points under both SGP and SGT. Because, because there's always, on both models, there always must be winners and losers.
And President Carter, Member Baker, on the SGT, it does not automatically mean that they will not get points, because they could have an SGT of 15 or 20. So they may be gathering points on the SGT portion.
Correct. But we don't know, and we can't tell a teacher or a principal, here's the students that you need to move, and this is how far you need to move them.
We, absolutely, we can, Mr. Baker. You can say, here are the, here are your students.
We cannot guarantee that that's going to result in a specific point value, because it's all normative.
Sure. Similarly, we can't guarantee that the work that we do is going to change proficiency levels either, right? So we don't know the number of items that a student needs to answer to get a performance level of proficient on any of our state assessments. We don't understand how those scale scores are calculated and derived from the testing company either. So it is an endeavor in effort to push every student to their maximum potential as fast as we can in the state, and then hopefully have an accountability system that is sensitive enough to recognize that and that policymakers who are willing to incrementally evaluate it and make changes where we need to.
Ms. Baker?
President Carter, I just have one, another kind of lingering question or concern. So going back to, let's say, that highly proficient or proficient student who has attained a year's growth and is keeping track. So I'm just concerned, like, when it comes down to it, they did not, let's say, they didn't earn the full points, it didn't, because of the weighting that's involved, is the only recourse left then to say, well, if you had started off minimally proficient, you would have gotten, you know, great points. I, I just, that's, that's not the kind of feedback, you know, that we should, we should or ought to be, the message we should or ought to be giving, like, to schools. You know, and as a teacher in the classroom, everything I do is criterion-based, you know, the rubrics with indicators, everything is criterion-based, it's very black and white, it's the student and what they have achieved. So I guess, could you respond to that?
Yeah. President Carter, Member Baker, I mean, the real, the answer that I think that you're, you're wanting to hear is, well, we could give everybody that is making at or near their student growth to target full credit. That is absolutely a policy decision. The consequence of that policy decision is that you build a model that is overall more highly correlated to the demographics of the student in the school. That is also a policy decision. So it's balancing which of those policy decisions has the most outward-facing face validity issue. Do you have, do you worry more as a board that your overall letter grade is going to simply track the zip codes of the schools and the students that attend them? Or helping teachers understand that if you are highly proficient and you are at or near the target, which means that you are not at the target to maintain your highly proficient status, but we're giving you credit anyway, that we're only giving you half the credit for that? It is simply a policy decision. Those numbers, as you've seen for the last several weeks, can be manipulated up and down till Sunday, well, we were doing it till Friday. But, so ultimately, it's, it's your decision how strongly you want this overall formula to be related to the demographics of the school. If, if you want that column to be all ones, we can tell you what it will look like. More schools will get more points, highly performing schools with lower poverty will get more of the points. They're going to crowd out the higher poverty schools from being able to earn the A ratings because they're also getting more of the proficiency points. And then your overall letter grade is going to bear a relationship that is much stronger. But ultimately, again, those are all policy decisions. We're just the data geeks, and we're here to tell you what the data tells us.
And President Carter, Member Baker, because I was listening, and I heard those concerns about those high SES kids or those highly performing kids not getting the points that they have earned, we have looked at it so many different ways, and we have not been able to show that there is a highly performing school that is hurt by this model. Peoria goes from 10% free and reduced lunch up to 85. So in my areas that are very high ES affluent areas, I looked even closer at them. And some of those schools that didn't have the growth points, I can tell you why within them they had the growth points. It wasn't the model, it was decisions at the school. So we, we separated by high numbers and low numbers, and we just did not see where we were hurting high-performing, high SES schools.
Yes, ma'am?
President Carter, my question was not about demographics. My question is about proficiency, like, a student, a school is proficient or highly proficient, and what is the message we're giving them? That is really the concern that I have. And, yeah, so that was my question, just to clarify.
Vice President Arducci or Dr. Chang, do you have any questions?
I do know.
And not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board here? Okay, Dr. Kerr, please.
All right, cut scores. Woo-hoo. Ready for some pictures and colors? All right, so you asked us to examine all of these data, method one and method two is what we're bringing you with respect to cut score methodologies. As you asked, we applied those changes individually and then combined. And then for each of the iterations, we presented three different distributions using the models that, based on the last conversation you had, we understood were the direction you wanted to go. We had lots of conversations about alternate cut score methodologies and values and where they could or could not be set. These are the ones that, based on time, energy, and then just practically what we've given you. So we're going to break down the data in the traditional 90, 80, 70, 60 letter grade calculation, that adjusted 80, 70, 60, 50, and then a straight standard deviation methodology with no adjustments. Just again, to reiterate, so the points that we're distributing reflect the percentage of points possible for each school based on their total possible points earned. So again, some schools have 100, some schools have 90, you know, so on. We made no additional cut score adjustments to F scores. You know that the last time we talked, we presented an idea of using three standard deviations to establish a very small band of F. In these methodologies, we did not do that, just so that you could see naturally how the data would shake out. And again, standard deviations are not adjusted. So here is the impact for method one, assuming you want me to go through method one, or we can jump to method two since that's our preferred. I'm happy to take direction from the president.
Two? Is everybody okay?
Yes.
Two, please.
Hold, please. Ooh, too fast. Okay. So again, just to reiterate, at or near targets, same weights for SGP, SGT. So here is the implementation of just changing SGP on the total points for the school. So this is combining all of the other indicators that an elementary school could have with only changing the SGP part of method two. You can see where we have what looks like a normal distribution centering around an average of 63 points with standard deviation of eight. In terms of the impact between the three different methodologies, so method one is, or the 90s, 80s, 70s, 60s, the first set, so on and so forth, the cut scores for the standard deviation, you'll notice as we go through, will vary by component. So we're recalculating, you know, the whole set standard deviations and means to establish cut scores on that route. You can see that we go from a tiny number of A schools under the straight 90, from 80, 70, to a slightly larger number, and then the standard deviation produces the largest set of data in that high ranking. Do we want to inform them of what's in here now?
We can.
So, President Carter, we're going to shift and apologies to the audience. I'm going to try to do this here. The handout that you received this morning, because it wasn't, oops, that's not it. Catchers at this one?
There it is.
Which one are we on?
K-2 SGP.
Sorry, I'm going to try to make that bigger. So what you have in front of you is the request for the incrementals, or the comparison across the letter band calculation for each of the components. This is similar to the materials that Dr. Fletcher created, you know, several presentations ago where you were able to see changes in the components. Wendy, do you kind of want to walk through the, what they're seeing?
So when you're looking at the table, the ones that are slightly highlighted, we gave you printed copies as well, are like a gray. So the ones that are colored are the components that changed. So you have each method, you have starting with the 90, 80, then the 80, 70, and then the strict standard deviation, so that you can go up and down and compare how many percents of As, Bs, in each one that you would see, all the way over to where your total points are. To clarify, there will be instances in here where growth, the highest growth max may be an AB and not an A. So my astute colleagues pointed that out to me. So we indeed went back and checked all the data, and there are certain situations that the person getting the highest growth will be a B and not an A, which we would expect in the situation. So that is not an error in the data, that actually is a clarification if you do see that. In most cases, you will see the max up in the A values and descending down from there. So we're on SGP method two. So because very little changed there, the 90, 80, 70s will go down two slides, I think three slides, Wendy. So you will not have any As because there was hardly any points with just changing the SGP. So if you remember, you didn't see any blue there, so I think we're almost there. There you go. So this was a slide we were just looking at where you only change SGP. So because there was little point gain, we don't get anybody up over 90 points. So if you did the 90, 80, you wouldn't see any As. So the, the actual graph was correct, and then you go down. So each time we change the model, we literally change the cut score. So these are pure standard deviation for every single model. If you remember, when we presented last time, we sort of did a marriage between the high school and elementary. These are pure standard deviations, so you can see how it plays out. Questions on reading the table, any assistance that I may give you?
No, please proceed.
The real details are in this slide deck. That just, we wanted to make sure that you had what you requested, which was that comparative analysis. Again, we weren't able to accomplish that by... Again, we weren't able to accomplish that by 5:00 p.m. on Friday, so that's why you're getting it this morning, apologies. But again, the heart of the conversation is in the slide deck, which you did receive already. So that's just SGP. When we look at, again, only changing SGT on Method 2, so SGP old calculations, SGT new calculations, in the event that you wanted to mix and match, you can see the distribution. This is, again, total points for the state and all of the elementary schools that were evaluated in our dataset. Average range still goes, you know, to not-quite-max here, mean of 66, standard deviation of 10. And then just to see what the impact is of, again, only changing just the SGT component, which is this at-or-near calculation, but keeping SGP, the old version of SGP, not this new one. You can see in this calculation, and what you'll see the trend is, that using a standard deviation methodology, by the nature of the method establishes the most A-rated schools because it isn't a strict criterion. But you can also see how there's some difference between adjusting the max cut score for A from a 90 to 80 does produce some number of A-rated schools, mitigates the F rating as well. By all means, if you have questions about these, stop, me and ask. Otherwise, we're just going to plug through. So this is now the combination of adjusting both SGP and SGT for the elementary schools. You can see now we're back to that full range of more, that some schools are earning more than 100 points possible because we've made an incremental change to how we calculate growth, as well as how we calculate the growth to target. That means increase as well. So we're continuing to see that bell shape curved, but skewed to the top end of the scale now in terms of schools earning more than the maximum number of points. And here's when we now see with both of the adjustments to elementary, for the first time, a substantial number of A-rated schools even at the 90, or 90 to 100 percent range. A large group now in the 80 to 100-point range. And then the standard deviation in this model actually is higher than the 80-point range, right? So we've shrunk that number a little bit in terms of the proportion of the students and schools that are earning these points. This is just so that you can see what the actual cut scores are across each of these methods in one swoop as opposed to trying to flip back over all of the slides. So just to be clear, Method 1 SGP is when we only change the SGP calculation. These are the cut score values at each of those methods, SGT, SGP, SGT, and so on.
For the standard deviation.
For the standard deviation model, I apologize, because the other ones are stable. 90, 80, never change. 80, 70, don't change. But because the standard deviation's produced certain cut scores with each of these incremental changes, we wanted you to be able to see what that looked like. Questions so far? Okay.
So that concludes?
That concludes elementary.
K-8.
Surprisingly enough.
So, board members, any other questions on K-8? Okay, so board members, how, I know there are a couple of items that we specifically wanted to deal with, the graduation points, graduation rate. Were there other areas that you wanted emphasis placed? Are those basically the two items that we really think we need to focus on? Okay. So Dr. Kerr, why don't you go ahead and proceed through the graduation points, graduation rates, and the letter grade impact, and then we'll see where the board wants to go from there.
Sure. Thank you, President Carter. So just to reiterate, the growth rate calculations are identical in 912 as they were in elementary. So the components, the methods.
So it's fair to say that the same, it's exactly the same issues?
Yeah, same issue. So we didn't rehash them, but we're happy to go into data if you want to go more. So we are just jumping straight into the graduation points. So again, the concern previously was that with just the calculation based on the incremental grad rates, four, five, six, and seven year, that there was no differentiation in grad rate points and that nearly all high schools received sort of the maximum points. And so, as you can see, they've sort of clumped together at the very high end, and therefore that indicator in the accountability system really looks to serve almost like as a constant. You know, with or without it, it doesn't make that big of a difference in terms of the formula. So our initial reaction to that was to create differentiation by establishing, using the weighting system based on each of the graduation rates up to 10 points, and then establishing some criterion or targets for the remaining 10 points for a school. Last time, we presented the idea of incrementally schools earning points based on their graduation rate increasing or decreasing, you know, based on where they are. So again, this is the four-year grad rate that we were, that we applied in terms of the data. And so if a school decreased more than two percentage points from their baseline year, in our initial analysis, they received zero points. If they had plus or minus two, so again, that band around their baseline year, they would receive five points. And if they maintained 95 percent grad rate or increased more than two percentage points, they would earn the maximum number of points. In our conversations this week, we had, I would say, robust discussions about that threshold of where we've set 95 percent to determine whether that's the right number. And we frankly just ran out of time to do more in terms of the analysis of alternate, you know, thresholds at that very high end. There is great concern, I would say unanimous concern from our high school members of Ag, that schools that have high percent graduations not getting maximum points, even though, you know, they might be 93 or 94 percent as opposed to 95. So we recommend that we, ADE continues to evaluate potentially lower thresholds or an alternate methodology. We still believe that there needs to be some component of growth in the calculation of graduation rate, not only to differentiate points and to distribute that indicator for schools, but as we mentioned before, to, in order for the governor and our state to accomplish they achieve 60 AZ goals and, you know, increased graduation rate goals, we do have to incentivize improvement on grad rate, not just rewarding what schools are getting done every year. So we made no adjustments to the data in terms of how we calculated at this time around. We just simply did not have time to create additional recommendations. So this is the impact of just changing the grad rate on total points for our high schools. You can see that we have not a normally, not a normal curve in terms of the amount of points that are earned here, but that schools are certainly earning the maximum point range and are above the total 100 points possible. In many cases, we've got, you know, the maximum is 114. So when we look at the impact on the actual distribution of points, again, the methodology that we're presenting is if you're 95 percent or greater, you get awful, you know, 10 points on that side, plus the accumulated points from your averaged points for four, or five, six, and seven. You can see that we have even in the 90, 80 methodology, some numbers of schools rated A, and the standard deviation methodology produces the largest set of A-rated schools and then consequently the remaining distribution of schools. We have the impact data for high school growth, if you want to see it, but it's consistent, to say the least, with the elementary. And so I think that our, again, our recommendation that we shared was for both elementary and for high school to go with Method 2, so that that provides comparability in a K-12 system, whether that's Unified District or a charter school that spans those grade level bands.
So let's have a conversation in regard to the grad rate issue and the graduation point issue. Board members, any questions or comments?
I don't know what to ask on the slide deck.
Yes, sir.
President Carter, just to be very short, I'm comfortable with Method 2, the recommendation, and then I was leaning more towards that 80, 70, 60, 50 model. I don't like the forced, even more forced, distribution of a standard deviation, but anyways, that's kind of splitting the baby for me.
Okay.
Member Carter, if I could just, for just a point of record, so the Ag would absolutely recommend that if you chose the standard deviation methodology, that that would be a stable cut score for future years, that we would not redistribute schools on an annual basis to force a bell curve, if you will. It just happens that when you do it the first time, you'll, that's how the data shakes out. But our recommendation, if you were to choose that methodology to set cut scores, is that for next year and probably a few subsequent years, that that target would remain the same for schools to be able to work towards improving. So just to clarify for the record.
Okay. Other board member comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
President Carter, I probably wouldn't feel comfortable being locked in for a few years, especially given our recent discussions, so.
Any other members of Ag want to make any comments? Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, are we ready to conclude the study session and move forward? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, President Carter, I have one more question, and that's related to the correlation chart that was presented earlier under the K-8. Is that the R, Pearson Correlation Coefficient R that's listed?
It's Pearson R, yes.
Okay, so can you, again, say it, reiterate how that whole relationship would work when you're stating there's a negative correlation? Because I understand it, a zero would mean no correlation.
President Carter, member Mac, when you're looking at a correlation, it'll go from negative one to one. So when you're negative, the higher one goes, the lower the other one goes. If you're positive, they're both growing together. A very basic way to look at it is a 1, 2, or 3, or negative 1, 2, or 3, doesn't really show a good correlation. 4, 5, 6, negative 4, 5, 6 is moderate. And when you get into a negative 7, 8, 9, or a positive 7, 8, 9, then you're getting some really strong correlations. But I also hand that over to my other members if they have a better way of explaining that.
And just on the screen is high school, but, you know, obviously the values were different at elementary, but just for the illustration of the correlations.
President Carter, I guess my question is, from your presentation, it sounds like you were aiming for something closer to a negative one. Is that correct? Or were you aiming for closer to zero?
It would be next to impossible to actually get the overall model to a zero. Without any fancy work on an SGP, you can get that very low. But as soon as we start manipulating it, gets to a negative two or somewhere in there. Your proficiency will always stay highly correlated, negatively correlated. It's compromise. I mean, the ad hoc spent a lot of time looking at correlations. These are one of the better ones that ended up forming.
Member Mac, I would say our overall goal for the total formula was a moderate effect. So, you know, 4, 5, 6 was, knowing that it's going to be negatively correlated because of the heavy negative correlation to poverty, you know, that's, we're not going to skew it so far, but our, we were trying to build a model that created a moderate relationship. And I think we've done that in both elementary and high school. The data indicates that we've done that. I don't just think it, I mean, it is empirically true.
And then, sorry, President Carter, one more question. I know you earlier said that you had tried giving the one point to the middle column, and that you were referring to the middle column in the method number two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that was a 1, 1, 1 all the way down?
It would go incremental. It would start in that middle column, and I think we tried 1, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, up to the next column, 1.3, 1.4, up. However, we got it to 2. And the correlation went up slightly, but the problem was it took away any distribution. It just forced, it skewed it very much hot to the higher points. Almost everybody was getting points, and there was no longer any variety or variation in the points.
I guess I'm just struggling with what we do now and trying to come up with the best option that we have available. So my question was, I guess, have you tried, did you try in your modeling for that middle column for SGT, a similar scale for the column next to it, like, starting at a 1 and then going to 1.2, 1.8, 2.0? Because in which case I can understand it would just be shifting the points upward, but this discrimination theoretically should still be there, but I don't know how it comes out in the modeling.
So when?
I don't know.
Did you actually do that model?
I have so many models in my head, I'm going to let somebody else.
I'm Kevin Kilborn, I'm with Saddle Mountain Unified School District. I did that exact model. What I found, and actually floated it, what I found is that the distribution shifted so high, you were above 100. The mean was like 111. So you had to then rescale it.
Yep.
And by rescaling it, I actually got it down to a really nice number. However, adding to the complexity of the overall calculation and how that is to explain the necessity to rescale, given the weighting scheme and all of that, it just didn't, based on our discussions before, it didn't lend itself to be a real feasible solution, so.
Okay, thank you.
President Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Ms. Davey. You indicated that, were you speaking specifically about Peoria Unified when you said that you couldn't find any examples where a school was hurt or penalized by Method 2?
President Carter, members, we had the state file, and we also had a column that had free and reduced lunch by deciles. So we were able to look at it that way. So we were looking at the whole state file. Did we have some schools with really high growth that may not have been an A? Yes, but there was few. Majority, like over 90 percent, that were getting full growth were falling in the A category. I personally then looked at my schools that had similar situations, and that's when I said I could adjust as to why they weren't. They didn't get the points that they should have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
President Carter, member K, I do want to speak up on behalf of some other members who also looked at their individual data, because I think one of the things that makes it difficult to really cleanly look at a school that has high achievement and look at how the growth weighting impacts that is because the proficiency is already weighted. So the dataset that we have for the state, for all the schools in the state, is already a weighted proficiency, so it's difficult to really identify. Does a 30 points on proficiency mean that you actually have 100 percent proficient? And it may or may not. And so it's anecdotal, but there actually are some schools in some of the Ag's districts that, for example, there's a school that's close to 100 percent proficient. And because of the weighting on growth, would, depending on where you set this cut score, would receive a B or a C. That's really difficult to stomach because what more could that school do? And if it's because of the growth points, again, it goes back to the point that some members were making, that first, you're already comparing kids to one another, and it's not about, did you keep the kids at grade level? Did you get them, you know, slightly higher? It's how their change over time compared to other students across the state. So it just gets very muddied, and what, it's difficult to think about what that message would be to that school's community. What more could they have done with their students? What more could they have done with their students? And I don't know that we have the answer cleanly with as many weighting and weighting upon weighting as there is.
Thank you. So, before we move on, board members, what I'd like to do is just kind of go around the room, around the dais, and have you provide some guidance as to what you think our next steps might be, realizing that we have another study session already scheduled for September 22 at 9 o'clock. We can spend as much time that day as we need, that is simply a study session. And as of now, the plan is, as part of the regular meeting on September 25, to finalize this issue. Say that again, to finalize this issue. So, I would like to hear from all the board members as to what your thoughts are. Are you good with that timeline? Do you think we need more meetings? Do you think we need to extend the timeline? Are there areas of focus that you think we should be looking at here in this next And we can start wherever, whenever somebody wants to start.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I'll go ahead and start.
Okay, Member Kay.
You know, I, as I said before, I think there's concerns with any model. There's so much complexity. How do you explain it to parents? How do you explain it to teachers and communities? I don't think the goal is to penalize highly proficient schools. One of the thoughts is we must have high-growing, high-proficient schools that are out there, which would be something quite interesting to take a look at. We want to be very mindful of the correlation to poverty. I think we have to be mindful of the correlation to poverty. So, there's no perfect model. How do we solve that one? I know years ago, there was a float weight. I don't know if that was discussed ever, where the school that, you know, you got credit or more credit for growth or more credit for proficiency, depending on where your school fell. I don't know if that's a possibility. I see you shaking your head no, so probably not.
The Attorney General's given us guidance that it's not.
Okay. Well, then it's a not. Where I am with the whole thing, I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bathwater. It is not a perfect model, but there isn't a perfect model. So, if we've got a framework that is based off of proficient SGP and SGT, I think we need to stick with that. If there is a way to look at the issue of highly proficient schools somehow being penalized, if there's something that could, we could isolate that, I think that's worth taking a very strong look at. But you've got that, I think it's just the balancing act between poverty and proficiency and the zip code issue. And if there's a way to solve that, wonderful. If there isn't, I think we still need to move forward. I think we owe it to schools. I think we can work on refinements going forward, and I feel like the September 25 time, it's time to do that.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to go next? You think I should keep coming this way? Okay, Madam Superintendent, that would mean you're next if I'm done.
I guess some of the things I struggle with, and I continue to struggle with, and I agree, that we need to do something. A decision has to be made. I hear Member Baker's concerned, because that's what keeps running around in my mind. How does a school look at, how do we improve? What does this model show them? What do any of these models show them? How to move forward? How do we, I guess I'm a fan of we get through this, I think we move ultimately to more of a report card-type process, where everything is not hinged on a letter grade and one test. That's the problem I can't get past, is that all of this is based on a test that I think anybody who knows me knows I've said loud and clearly over time, I don't have a lot of faith in. So, I'm not sure that helps you very much, but honestly, those are my thoughts, that how do we get high schools? We don't want to go back to high-stakes testing, but I hear all across the state, our high schoolers don't see, they have any buy-in on this. I have concerns about the, with all due respect to the board, their guiding principle, that it all needs to be computer-based. We have to come up with an A-through-F system, so I just listen, and I'm open to alternatives.
Very well. Member Mack?
President Carter, members of the board, I would echo Superintendent Douglas, I'm open to alternatives. I like the proposal that came through in the letter today about the report card framework for letter grade reporting, and especially allowing for each measure to be measured separately. I think that's important. As far as timing, I'm open to whatever we need to make the best reporting system. This is about accountability, and accountability needs to mean something. If it doesn't, then we've lost all accountability, which defeats the whole purpose. So, I'm open to meetings, I'm open to timing, I'm open to whatever it takes to come up with the best system for our students and for our schools. They need to be able to take actionable feedback. It means too much to the schools. You know, school districts, school leaders take this to heart, and they really, they take that information in order to build their strategic plan, their mission, their vision, their goals, and instructional strategies, professional development. It influences everything at every level in a school and district. It's too important to go with something that we don't feel absolutely comfortable moving ahead with. As far as the correlation to poverty, I understand that's something that's come up. I understand that's a huge consideration, but I'm not comfortable, how do I say this? It needs to still be, maintain integrity, so, without maintaining the integrity of the system that we've built. So, whatever that takes. And then I've raised points throughout the meeting today, but that's basically.
So, can I ask a clarifying question? So, I appreciate the fact that you're open to flexible dates, but if we were to add meetings either before the 22nd or after September 25th, what would you hope to focus on so modifications could be made to improve the system?
Maybe you could revisit me after you.
Okay, no, that's fair. That's fair. Member Baker?
President Carter, members of the board, two things. One, I agree with what Member Mack and Superintendent Douglas said, but two things. One is, I can go back to a quote one of the Ag members gave, I think it was back in the ad hoc process, where he said, "All systems are flawed, some are useful." And as much as I want this over with, I want to quit making trips to Phoenix, do other things, I'm willing to meet more often to try to come up with a system that is going to be flawed, but that is more useful.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Well, President, first off, I wanted to just say thanks to Elde, and Wendy, Rebecca, and other members of the Ag. I mean, the amount of work that they're doing, to me, it's kind of like that duck on water analogy. You know, we just see it when it's nice and clear above the line, but down below, you know, paddling that crazy. It's an old chestnut, I know, but anyways, thanks to them, and thanks to folks like Kyrene, who are brave enough to come out and say, hey, this is not heading in the right direction. So, I appreciate that. I hope you know that we value that leadership, really, to speak up, because it's probably not easy to bring your team and do that. Members, comments from Member Baker? If we have the air cover to do that, I'm with him on that. I'm not sure that we do, but I agree with him 100% that what I'm thinking here is that we have systemic issues, now that we've sort of explored the framework that we adopted in the spring. I think with all good intent, but we just didn't have as much data as we do now, we thought growth meant something. Now we know, in order to make any rational sense out of it, or at least, I'm not going to restate everything, but we're seeing all the flaws in that, and we might, if we knew then what we knew now, maybe we wouldn't have put that in the model, at least, I'm not sure I would have. Coming out of industry, they want you to know, they want to know what you can do, right? They don't care as much where you come from, they want to know what you can do. Can you get a job done? And that means proficiency. Now, I'm not one that thinks that everything should be based on a test, you know, that's why I oppose some of the original motions on this. But I think that has to be an emphasis of the letter grade. To me, a couple of things that are surfaced as structural problems here that we're dealing with, because I don't think we're at a point here where we can just do more math. I think we've, when you look at the descriptive statistics, you're really just moving it around, right? I mean, and that's what we've heard. The legislature has put a standards-based system in place, and as we talked with ADE about some struggles with AZ Merit, they said, well, that's what a standards-based test gives you. You don't have very good preparation going into the test, and you don't have good postmortem data going out of the test versus AIMS, which is more of a skills-based test. You can do better preparation coming in, and you can do better postmortem work afterwards. So, I think that there's some structural things that if we have the capacity to deal with on the board, that should be evaluated. I think part and parcel to that is the menu of assessments. Because as you've heard, I'm not going to go on again, but I don't like AZ Merit. I don't like it because it's a standards-based approach, and people are not well-prepared going in, and they're, we're not getting good data to come out. So, the struggles that we heard, you know, Elde touched on one of them, other people touched on them. How do we, even with all of the relative, the moving, the goalposts that we have here, well, even if we had better data coming out of these tests to help our teachers and students and parents really understand what their goals were, if we had better information of actually who performed where and what their skills gaps were, we could bolster our curriculums, we could go fix those problems like we could with AIMS. So, President, I know that we have a deadline, we have a mandate, the legislature has set a standards-based framework here. I'm not looking to turn over everything here. To me, this is as good as we can get at this point, given the way the table's set. So, I'm okay with where we're headed with this method 2. To me, I prefer that, like I said, that 80, 70, 60, and the reason is because that's more what I think, the whole point of the structure, well, the standards-based, you know, common core infrastructure here is a workforce development model. And at the end of the day, industry needs to know you can actually do something. Colleges need to know you can do something. And I don't blame them for pushing so hard on the K-12 system, because we're sending so much remediation work to them, because that's a lot of, but that's the framework that we've been given. We play in that box. You may not like it, but since that's the box, that's the best that we can do right now. I'm okay moving forward with what we have, just knowing that I think we need to deal with bigger issues to get ourselves out of this cul-de-sac that we're spinning in right now. So, I don't know that those are the most pleasant words that everybody wants to hear, but if we have the air cover to do more, I'm with Member Baker and others, that I think we should do it, because he's very wise in saying, once you said it, trying to turn that ship around afterwards is going to be very, very hard. I'm not sure that we do. Maybe you can enlighten us on that a little bit, but those are a couple of thoughts that I have as we've listened here over the last couple of months on this issue. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Member Mack, back to you, if you're ready. If not, I can go on the phone?
Yeah, go on the phone.
Go on the phone. Vice President Narjuci, any comments?
Yes, President Carter, thank you. Just a couple, listening to everybody else's, I first want to thank the Ag for all the work that's gone on and for the past history involved, which I was not involved in. And going back to a couple of things that were just mentioned, I cannot disagree with Member Cal's comments regarding usefulness aspect presented by Member Baker. It, you know, the usefulness aspect has got to be present, and I'm sure that the way it's presented right now on method 2, there can be usefulness as time goes along developed. I'm not sure what that is right now, standing on the outside looking in, but I'm sure that the proposal for method 2 can find some procedure going forward there, where we can incorporate some usefulness. With that said, however, I still think commenting on Member Taylor's comments just now in conjunction with everybody else's, if in fact there is some leeway to get more insight into a more useful product, immediately, you know, we could do that. But I don't see that. I see that we have to move forward on the timeline that we're given. I think the timeline that we provided so far is the timeline that we should be moving along with. However, my concern with all of this, I think goes back, and I forget which member comments to this, that long-term, we have to have the lowest-scoring schools be able to achieve the highest scores. And I think what I heard today is that with the current model, that is impossible to happen, and I'm not happy with that. I don't think that we can live with that long-term. The lowest-scoring schools have to be able to achieve the highest score, and at the same time, the highest-scoring schools need to be able to maintain their highest scores, not, in many different ways, not only live on their laurels, but be able to continue to achieve and push the students to achieve more. If method 2 in application can do that, method 2 can be a method for the long term. If method 2 cannot do that in the long term, it's going to have to be revisited sometime in the future. So, those are my comments. I can live with the timeline. I think method 2 is, and with the data we got today, has been fantastic as far as more informative and makes me understand it better, but those are my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Chang, are you still with us? Okay, not hearing Dr. Chang. Well, from my perspective, I agree with almost everything I heard. I think that we have moved to a point in time where it, even though my personal view is it might be advantageous to move in a little bit different direction, I just simply don't know that at this point in time, we have the luxury of being able to do that for this year. So, I'm hearing some folks saying that they're flexible, and they're willing to have additional meetings if we need to, but they also are willing to move forward and make a decision here on the 25th. So, I have meetings scheduled later this week with legislative leaders, and we're trying to set up a meeting next week with the governor's office, so I will have more feedback from them. But I think at this point, let's plan on proceeding as scheduled. We will plan on having the study session on the 22nd. We will plan on a voting session on the 25th, depending on what I hear later this week and next week, and on feedback that you folks provide, either to Dr. Schmidt or Catcher, and that the executive committee reviews, will have a final determination. I too want to thank the folks who spoke today, certainly want to thank the department and the Ag. Their work has been very important, and we greatly appreciate it. So, I think with that, we're going to take about a seven-minute break here. We'll come back at 11:15 and begin with our general session.
President Carter, I'm sorry, before we move on, I just want to make sure that Doc.
Before we move on, I just want to make sure that Dr. Fletcher, who has joined us on the line, has all the direction that she needs before we get out of this study session.
Thank you, Catcher. Dr. Fletcher, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. I don't know that we really have any future direction to provide you. Hopefully, you heard kind of this little round robin that we just went through where every board member kind of gave their perception of pros and cons and what they would like to see. I think at this point, we're planning to continue with the study session on the 22nd, the voting session on the 25th, with the understanding that there are some meetings coming up that may give us some additional guidance and ideas and thoughts. But as of now, I don't think we have any direction specifically to provide to you. Mr. Baker?
Could we perhaps provide the direction that since, I mean, there's been concerns raised, and so if an alternative solution is proposed, that we are willing to look at that?
Well, I think that, I guess I should have just said that. I think the presumption is, is that as board members put more thought into this and have more time to review this data, and as schools and the AG, legislative leaders, the Governor's Office have an opportunity to look at this and have some conversations around it, if someone has an alternative suggestion or modification that they think would help us, absolutely, I think that we would want to hear that. And the 22nd would be a good time to review that. If it's something that we would need to model, then that would impact that schedule. I don't know about everybody else, but my schedule here for the next couple of weeks is pretty well-packed, so I would have to move a number of things to be able to open a day. And I know we've already got three meetings scheduled this month, on top of five meetings last month. So, again, time has just never been our friend, but yes, I think clearly, if somebody comes up with a proposal that we believe has merit, we need to review it. Okay? All right. So let's take what's now about a five-minute break, please.
Okay, this is our one-minute warning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start back in one minute. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me call the meeting back to order, please, about 11:21. This is a general session, item 3A, presentation, discussion, possible action on revising the timeline for the calculation and issuance of A to F school letter grades for the alternative education schools and AOI, and we will take those separately. So I believe that on the line we have Vice President Narducci and Dr. Chang. Is that correct? Only Vice President Narducci. Okay. So we still have a quorum, so we're ready to proceed. As I have stated on several previous occasions, I have a conflict on the alternative ed program. Normally, Vice President Narducci would chair that section, but he and I agree that since he's on the phone, it's very difficult to chair an item when you're physically not in the room. So I have asked our senior member to see if he would be willing to chair this, and Mr. Taylor said that he would be more than happy to do that. So I'm going to reclusive myself. I won't be involved in the discussion of the voting and turn it over to Member Taylor.
Thank you, President Carter. So item 3A1, so presentation, discussion, possible action regarding revising the timeline for calculating and issuing AF school letter grades for alternative schools. I'm going to ask Catcher to give us a 30-second staff update on this and what's the decision and the question before us.
Member Taylor, members, Superintendent Douglas, members, if you recall at the last board meeting, the board adopted a revised timeline and extended timeline for traditional schools. That revised timeline excluded alternative schools and AOIs. Shortly after that board meeting, staff reached out to the alternative schools' ag and requested feedback and input on a revised timeline. They responded with a letter, which is in your materials as an attachment, and the timeline is reflected as option 1, which essentially delays issuing letter grades until next school year. It's my understanding that there's some questions on the legality under the statute as to whether or not that's allowable. Board staff also felt it was prudent to provide the board with a second option if it wished to issue letter grades in this school year, and so that is reflected in option 2 on the executive summary. Board staff worked with ADE to make sure that that was workable and also consulted with ALT AG as best as possible, though it was sort of a tight timeline, and so they had really just Friday around noon and over the weekend to digest that. And then finally, Member Taylor and Member Superintendent Douglas, there is another attachment with this item that was a result of discussions at the last board meeting regarding alternative schools and some questions that the board was hoping that ADE would receive clarification from USDOE on. So that letter is provided below with some of the responses that USDOE had regarding alternative schools and AOIs, graduation rate, calculation of graduation rates, and menu of assessments. ADE staff is here if you have any questions on that letter specifically that you would like to have answered, and it's also my understanding that the ALT AG group and Dr. Schlesman is here to talk about their letter and their proposed timeline. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I hope it, I don't think I kept it under 30 seconds, but I tried.
That was aspirational to try to keep it under 30, but thank you, Catcher. Any questions for staff? I know one of the questions on legality of option 1 or 2, are we in the clear on both of these options? I'm looking here for any guidance that you might have or anything there, or should we, Attorney General, why don't you go ahead and just let us know if we're in the clear on both options here?
Board Member Baker, or Board Member Taylor, excuse me, I think that if the board would like legal advice on that issue, that it would be my preference to recommend that the board convene an executive session for legal advice on that issue.
Would the board want some additional information on the topic of option 1, 2 in executive session? Are we agendized to be able to do that?
Yes, you're covered by the statement contained on the notice.
Okay.
Point of order, I don't believe that's, I don't believe you can get it, put a get-out-of-jail-free agenda item for executive session in the notes. The community is specifically entitled to know what we might intend to meet on executive session on, not that we just suddenly decide to have one. So why, what legal advice, I'm not sure how to phrase this, that you can answer it. I mean, I don't know why there would be legal advice that, about the suspension or hiatus of the A through F that everyone here can't hear.
Well, it's in the discretion of the board whether they would like to receive legal advice in executive session or whether they would like to receive legal advice out of executive session.
Aren't we just asking whether we can or can't?
I'm asking if there's interest in going into executive session to have legal advice on options 1 or 2 moving forward. And Superintendent, thank you for your input. I'd like to see if there's other members of the board that...
Oh, I don't have a statement regarding the legal advice, but I do have a question about the additional materials we received.
Okay.
Can I ask that?
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, thank you. So with the additional materials received from Carol Lippert, it says that Arizona is not permitted to utilize a separate accountability for alternative and AOI schools. Can you elaborate on that? And then the following statement, "ADE, however, is unwilling to change the accountability system without the input of stakeholders and the state board." Points B and C.
Member Taylor, Member Mack, yes, in our conversations with USDOE, they, we've been going back and forth quite a bit actually about our state plan, and of course, in our state plan, we've included all of the models that have been proposed to the State Board of Education, since that has been your role, is to work on their A through F accountability models. What they have told us is that under ESSA, that we cannot have a separate accountability model for our alternative and AOI schools because they have access to all of the same data points that our traditional schools would have. So in order, and I'm using their words, so please don't shoot the messenger here, but in order, what they say is to, in order to meaningfully differentiate between all of our public school options that we have available for our students, then they must all be sort of compared on the same measures and on the same scale, is what they're saying. So we had to resubmit our A through F plan with revisions as they had suggested. We at ADE did not feel like we could just take out the ALT schools model and the AOI model, since that is the State Board of Education that oversees that. So we did resubmit that back in and expect to hear back by September 6th, because that is the end of their 120-day deadline to provide information for us as to whether they will accept or reject our state plan.
With the models that we...
With the models included in there, correct.
Please.
Assistant Chairman, I don't know what, what is your title now?
Member Taylor.
Member Taylor. We did have a discussion with USDOE last week, and basically, not just from the standpoint that because it's the board's model, yes, absolutely, but because it's also our state requirement, and just the fact that we recognize that this is going to be a very important part of our accountability system, that we made the decision not to change and remove those. So we'll see where the chips fall, hopefully sooner rather than later. One of the arguments, I wasn't able to speak with Secretary DeVos personally, but one of the arguments that I made with the acting K-12, Acting Assistant Secretary of K-12, was that one of the things, and I think this is what we struggle with in our A through F also, is we are a state that has more choice probably than any other state in the nation, and that makes for difference. One size doesn't necessarily fit all. It's probably very easy to come up with an A through F system, and an A through F system for all of your schools when you only really allow one model within your state, but we're very different. So that doesn't help much, but we felt that it was very important to stand by the model that was created here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Mack. Is there any other questions for staff before we move forward?
Member Taylor, this is Luke.
Please.
I, some of this discussion, I'm just trying to recall our last meeting, some of the discussion came with respect to Member Cor's comment about the Accuplacer. Is that right? I mean, I'm just trying to recall. You sent some questions back regarding Accuplacer, so I'm just wondering where it leads us with respect to the use of Accuplacer, or if that's even the right name. Yeah, Accu, yeah, Accuplacer. Is that still going to be a potential to be utilized in the state, or how, how did you play out?
Vice President Narducci, I'm going to ask ADE to give us an update on that.
Member Taylor, Member Narducci, yes, thank you for your questions. So we did specifically bring that up in our conversation with the US Department of Education, and, you know, there's a couple of interesting things in ESSA about the menu of assessments. One, ESSA does allow for a menu of assessments at the high school level. However, the menu of assessments, and help me out, Kelly, if I say this wrong, so the menu of assessments needs to be still our statewide assessment. So whatever we're including in accountability has to be our statewide assessment. Accuplacer would not be our statewide assessment, so Accuplacer would not be an appropriate, nationally-recognized statewide assessment for us to use and for accountability purposes. That certainly wouldn't hinder a school from saying that they would like all their students to participate in Accuplacer and to be a part of, be a part of that system. However, what they're telling us is that that would not be acceptable for accountability purposes underneath of ESSA. The other thing, just to be clear too, and they wanted to make very clear, is that ESSA does not allow for a menu of assessments at the elementary school level at all. So really, it only allows for it 9 through 12, does not allow for it K through 8, although, of course, our state law does allow for it in elementary school. So does that answer your question?
Member Taylor. So, I'm confused. How can a menu be a menu if one test is required?
I just chuckle, Member Taylor, Member Baker, because I asked a very similar question when we were on our phone call, and so I am telling you back what they said on the phone. We asked for more clarification, and do you recall, basically, they, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but basically, they said that they are still seeking to try to understand better what the menu of assessments within ESSA means, and that Arizona, with our state law, is sort of on the forefront of the menu of assessments, and so we are the first to begin asking these questions about what that means and what that can look like. Other states are not as far down that road as we are, because we specifically asked about, you know, what other states, are there other states that are using menu of assessments within their accountability systems? What does that look like? How are they doing that? And we were told we were one of the first to ask that question, so.
Member Taylor, so I understand the need to get a plan approved, but what are the implications of submitting a plan that is not responsive to what they are asking for? In other words, to submit a plan with the understanding that we may have to appeal whatever decision comes back from the federal government? I mean, it seems like you're talking to acting assistants who, and seems like things are very fluid, so I'm wondering how necessary it is for us to give up on something we strongly believe in in order to accommodate.
Member Taylor, Member Baker, we are not willing to give up in the department on something that we and this board very strongly, and our legislature very strongly believes in. Certainly, by the 22nd, we can give you an update on that, and we can give, we will gladly give the board an update externally from that. I can present a memo as soon as we know. But the whole discussion of ESSA was about returning authority to the states to allow them to make the decisions that are best for their state, which is what I tried to remind them of very loudly and clearly last week. And, you know, all the intent of Congress law is great for what they pass, but I don't think even now, as they talk about returning some of the authority of the states, they really see what potentially that can mean and what it can potentially mean in a state as innovative as ours is. They're talking about innovation, but then when we innovate, they kind of kick us back and say, well, no, you can't do that because the law says you can't. We've questioned them in areas like this. I think the gray area may be the assessment, but there's other areas that they've, you know, asked questions on and for clarification on, and we asked them to show us where that might be exactly in the law, presuming one thinks they have the authority from the Constitution to even be involved in education law, but that's a whole different argument on another day. But we are standing for what the board and our legislature and our governor and all our hundreds of shareholders who had input in this plan have done.
Please.
Well, thank you very much for that, and thank you for taking that position. So precisely, what is the issue before us today? What do we, what are we?
The question before us is to adopt the timeline to approve the 8F. This particular one is for the alternate schools. Okay, and if you look in the packet, there's option 1, which pretty much issues the first letter grade August. Option 2 is a little more escalated, issues it in February of next year. So I do want to hear a little bit more on the options, but I wanted to add a comment, Member Baker, because as I did some research on Accuplacer, one of the things that they're rolling out is a revised version of the Accuplacer, because Accuplacer, and going back to some of my previous comments, is more skills-based. Their revised version is more standards-based, which should be more appealing to the Department of Education, because it's more consistent with some of the framework that we have already in the state and the framework of our standard test. So anyways, just if the board is willing to go down that path, I know I would stand there. I think that's a good comment, and it's something worth bringing up, given where Accuplacer is going and how much it is aligning with our state.
Member Taylor, correct, I agree, and I just want to remind the board of a comment that Dr. Cor made at a recent meeting, that all of the community colleges in the state are going to a single cut score, which gives even greater legitimacy to the argument that you're making.
Very good. Okay. Do we need any more information from staff, or can we get some preferences here on option 1 or 2, or some variety within? Are we okay?
Would the ALT AG like to weigh in, Member Taylor?
Would you, out of curiosity?
Oh, they're shaking their heads.
Dr. Schlesman, should we give you the 30-second challenge?
Yes. I'm not sure, but, so I'm Dr. Schlesman, and I'm here today on behalf of the Alternative Accountability Advisory Group. And if I were to do it in 30 seconds, we proposed what you're seeing as option 1, as responsible researchers and school assessment people, that things are still being decided about the traditional model. Therefore, we own, and we have, at this point, as one of my colleagues said, basically zero outcome data. So in all fairness to the schools involved, we would ask for that year hiatus. I know the Attorney General has something to say about that, but there was a hiatus in 2011, and we are confused about why that was possible, and now it might not be. I have not seen, we have not seen the legal analysis that Carol received back at the beginning of this year. That might be helpful. And this board has also set precedent this year in 2017 to take the hiatus for the small school model. So if that's my 30 seconds, I'll step back if you would like to hear some more.
Any questions for Dr. Schlesman? Thank you. No questions?
Actually, Member Taylor, not a question for Dr. Schlesman, but a question. I guess a little bit of background maybe and some understanding, Mr. Baden, on why board staff has made an alternate recommendation.
Member Taylor, Superintendent Douglas, it was for two reasons. One, it was my understanding from previous discussions that there was an opinion that delaying letter grades for a year for alternative schools was not allowable, because Dr. Schmidt did receive that legal analysis, but because we have issues accessing her email out of country, we have issues finding that legal analysis. And so that was one reason why board staff felt that it would be good for the board to have something else to look at. Another reason was if the board did not, if there was not a willingness to delay letter grades, we also felt it was prudent to have something for the board to look at in either case. So that's why that alternative timeline was put forward, working with Dr. Fletcher, to make sure that it was doable on ADE's side in terms of getting data out to the board.
Okay, and just a follow-up question, because I don't recall seeing it, and I apologize if I just missed it. Was that, to your knowledge, was that letter of advice forwarded onto the board members?
Member Taylor, Superintendent Douglas, I just, I don't know, not having been here at the time and also not being able to find that legal opinion or analysis, I just, I can't answer that, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it, but thank you.
I think we got a question for, go ahead, Vice President.
Thanks. I just have a question. So if we were to move to approve option 1, and option 1 ends up being not in line with law, then what we would do is go with option 2? Is that, I mean, can we make a motion essentially that would approve option 1 so long it's in line with law, otherwise we're going with option 2?
That motion, Vice President, it's, unless the Attorney General tells me otherwise, that does seem like that would be in order. But I did want to ask a question, and maybe Attorney General can help here. Is there a process where we could get a legal opinion under attorney-client privilege or some other option where we can get that information?
Board Member Baker, it's my understanding that the question originally was asked with regard to the alternative letter grade being put off a year, whether that was a provision in statute. And it, statute does not specifically allow for the hiatus. If we look at the language of the statute in answering the question, which again, you're not going to have the question directly answered, but if you look at the language of the statute, you have the note to the bill that says, "For the 2017-18 school year, the Department of Education shall publish letter grades based on data collected during the 2016-17 school year." You also have the language in 15-241, that "The department shall compile an annual achievement profile for each public school and LEA." In the provision of 241H states that, "Subject to final adoption by the State Board of Education, the Department of Education shall use achievement profiles appropriately to assess the educational impact of accommodation schools, alternative schools, and extremely small schools, may develop profiles for schools that participate in the board examination system prescribed in Chapter 7, Article 6, and schools that participate in the Arizona Online Instruction, and may develop other exceptions prescribed by the State Board of Education for the purposes of this section." That's the language of the statute that you have. And I think while there may be some more flexibility in the terms of the development of a profile, because the language is "may" for the AOI, the language for the development of an alternative school is that the department shall do that. And then, again, as I said, you have the language of the legislature in the note.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
Member Taylor, so just to clarify, from what I heard, the timing is in the language of the statute. They shall use the data collected from the 2016-17 school year, each LEA and public school. Is that correct?
Yes, the language in the note is that, "For the 2017-18 school year, the Department of Education shall publish letter grades based on data collected during the 16-17 school year."
Yeah, so the timing to me is very clear there. Option 2 was established in conjunction with board staff as well as ADE with Dr. Fletcher, stating there would be not, no issues with the timeline. So I feel comfortable going with option 2, and should the need arise, you know, as we go through it, adjust the timing, but it sounds like to conform to statute.
Member Mack, would you like to put that in a motion?
I would move that the board revise the timeline for calculating and issuing the A to F school letter grades for alternative school using option 2, which is the revised timeline proposed by board staff.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Member Taylor.
Please.
I would just like to reiterate what Member Mack shared, in that if there's a need to revisit the timeline, that we should take a look at it. You know, when we looked at the executive summary, the ADE has indicated they're unable to provide impact data until after completing the work on the traditional school, the last, traditional framework. Our previous discussion in the study session, we may or may not meet that timeline. So again, I just want to be sure that we are clear that we will revise the timeline. And then when we talk about the usefulness of a grade and of the framework that we're creating, we're looking at, at this point, February, releasing letter grades. If we have to do it as a board, if it is in statute, something we don't really have a choice on, then it is what it is. But at the same time, just want to reiterate that usefulness discussion, and also acknowledge ADE, Superintendent and staff, want to thank you for taking the stance that you did with the... all of these schools into one accountability system, and it will be absolutely meaningless. There will, it will have zero meaning whatsoever. And so if we're talking about a special population of students that meets a specific criteria, it is so important that we make sure that whatever it is we do, and I don't know what our options will be, if the answer is no from the U.S. Department of Education, but it is so important that we create something that is meaningful, that is useful, and in the future, that is more timely for our schools. So I'm in support of the motion, provided that we are able to revise as needed.
Thank you, Member Kay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, I think the ayes have it, seven oh with one abstaining.
It would be six oh with one.
Six oh, okay, thank you. President Carter, how'd we do?
Thank you, Member Taylor. Appreciate your leadership through all of that. So that brings us to 3A2, same basic discussion about the timeline dealing with the Arizona Online Schools. If you will look at the executive summary, I think it's capsulized pretty well for you. Option one is to adopt the same timeline with all of its imperfections that you just adopted with all the things that we may need to deal with. And then option two, a revised timeline as proposed by the AOI Advisory Group. It's laid out there for you, beginning today and going through, finalizing on November 13th. So catcher, anything I missed there?
President Carter, Superintendent Douglas, members, no, that was, that pretty much captures it, I guess. I did just want to make a note that depending on the model that the board decides to go with, and what kind of changes might have to happen to the AOI model, if there is a third model, that will change how much time ADE staff needs to write new code, and may need to provide more time for the board to be able to see the impact data. So that is something that may significantly impact the timeline. And so that's just something that the board should consider when voting on a timeline.
So effectively, if the board misses September 25th on the traditional model, that will obviously impact this timeline as well. Okay. So questions or comments from the board? I believe the AOI leadership is here, but I think their recommendation is before us, unless they have other comments to make. Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Sure.
A move that the board revised the timeline, consistent with option one, for calculating and issuing the AF letter grade for Arizona Online Instruction.
Okay, so the motion is for option one. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, which is option one, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to 3B, presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding public comment policy. This is an item that we carried over from our last meeting, because I know the Superintendent had some questions or comments she wanted to make. Let me just kind of share with you how this document came to be. There were discussions at a board meeting in August about this. There were some discussions around it at the retreat. I took what I thought were very good notes about the comments that folks made. I then took this document and tried to incorporate all of those comments into the document. And so you see the blue items and the strike-throughs were a compilation of those discussions. And so comments, or questions, or concerns? Yes, ma'am?
First of all, I'd like to start with some broad, general comments, and maybe certainly these would be considered rhetorical questions at this point in time, but I guess one of the things I've been struggling with since I've been on the board is what is the difference between a policy and a rule? Because we create rules, and they go to the Secretary of States, and they're published for the whole world to see. And then we, from time to time, have things that crop up that we call policies. And I know, I, as a board member, have never been given a policy book, or an accumulation of any of these things in any sort of way. So I guess part of it, one is, what's the difference between a policy and a rule? Why are some of our things in rules, why are they in policy? How, if there is a difference, how do members at slash John Q. Public find where all the accumulated policies that have been created by this board over the last 100-plus years, where do they exist? And where then do we find our policy setting, policy setting, call it what you want, policy procedure protocol? So these are some things I'd like to see us address in the future. And again, if I missed it, I went through my board member packet, and I didn't see anything that was a policy book. So to the issue, no, I don't want to call them issues. Some of the questions I had about our blue line copy is, first, on number three, where it says, "Request to speak information shall include the name," and address was stricken because I believe we shouldn't ask that of people. But we've also struck the name of an organization, if any, the person represents. And I think, since we do have so many special interest groups that come and speak before us, I think knowing whether they're representing themselves, or whether they're representing an organization, and which organization absolutely should be part of the public record, not just for us, but for the, for the public, for four.
If I can interrupt you, so you're suggesting that the and address, go ahead and be stricken, and the name of the organization, if any, that the person represents, be retained?
Retained, yes.
Okay, thank you.
My, for four B, my personal preference is that we hear agenda items specific to an agenda item during that agenda item, rather just in the general call to the public. I guess I wasn't, just a point of clarification on, actually, this was in before the board, and this is under 4C, I'm sorry, talks about having a public hearing. And so are we considering that a public hearing within a meeting? And that's just a point of clarification, not that I think to change it, or that we would designate specific meetings as public hearings. And I guess my confusion came in is because whether it's a public hearing or not, I don't know why we would change our public comment policy, other than maybe it would be an endless amount of time.
Madam Superintendent, I think your point is well-taken. There is a difference between a public hearing and a, and a public meeting. I mean, a public hearing takes place in a public meeting, but it has a very specific purpose, and it's usually required by law. I guess I don't see in item C where it refers to a hearing at all. Oh, there it is, so it's in the fourth line down. And I guess I would agree that both of those would be dealt with the same way. I don't see a rationale to have a separate comment policy for a hearing versus a regular agenda item. So I would agree with that.
My last, I just have two more comments, and for, getting my eyes checked this Friday, I can't wait. For D, where it talks about the written comments that may come into the board prior to the board meeting, will not be read aloud by board staff or board members at the board meeting. Written comments will not be distributed at the board meeting. So I guess my question on that, or my concern, is then, how do other community members know those comments, or know what input the board was given? I mean, I liked it when staff, as long as if we said it's, you know, a 200-word limit, so it would stay within the three-minute context. I actually liked it when, on 4G, would be that, that the president or a board member may be able to request that someone come forward to give testimony.
Again, I'm sorry, that last number was item?
G.
Okay, the stricken comment, or the replacement comment, or both?
Well, to the, I, you know what, I jumped over the stricken comment, quite frankly, although it struck because that's First Amendment. So the new G, that it be the president or a board member may invite a member.
Okay. All right, very well. Yes, ma'am. Comments?
President Carter, I would agree, I, you took very good notes when I was reviewing it. I thought it reflected accurately the discussion we had during that meeting. I would have no issue changing with Superintendent Douglas's input, the name of the organization. I believe that would be useful to have in there. The way I read point 4C was that the board may also designate a meeting as a public hearing. It's in the context of limiting the public comments to three minutes in length and additional time granted. So the way I read it within the context of that point was just that, no worries, if we may need more time, we can always have a public hearing. That was kind of how I interpreted it, but if, you know, we could remove it, or do whatever we want to that point, to make it more clear and succinct, I have no issues with that.
So you actually are okay with C as it's written?
I'm okay, just because of the way I interpreted it. In the context of that point, I understood it as, if there are too many, then let's go ahead and have a public hearing. That's what I interpreted it as, but, you know.
I can't make a question.
Yeah.
And you'd be okay with that understanding?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then I have no preference during the agenda item, or at the start of the meeting. I understand we had a discussion about that, that day, I recall. So it was just, some people prefer to have it all at once, other people, without breaking up the flow of the board meeting. So I can go either way.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, I appreciate the Superintendent's comments. I agree with most of them, and then with the clarification here, I would just, on D and G, in terms of how the public gets written comments, there's some issues that are before us, where we're flooded with emails, and there's others, most of the time, we don't have a lot. So what I've seen in other public bodies is if someone wants to see anything that's come through our public email, then they can do a records request, and they have access to that, and that certainly helps the meeting move along as well. But to read them in where there's a lot of them, that might really bog things down. So I don't have a problem if it's a one-off, but if, you know, there's 100 to read in there to make it a mandatory part of the meeting, I think maybe there's a gate there that we can balance and encourage people, if they want to get all the public comment, to put a records request in, and they can have access to all the information that we have been given. So that's a thought on D. And then on G, I don't mind that the president may invite, just because the president, or whoever the presiding officer is, it may be the vice president, is just regulating the meeting. So to have just any member do that without it going through the presiding officer of the board, I don't think is really good parliamentary procedure. I think it's procedurally better, whoever, maybe it's the president or the presiding officer, you know, makes the formal invitation, but, you know, any member can certainly request someone, but I think it should come through the presiding officer of the board. Just my opinion on that particular item.
So under G, you're specifying that the president may still invite a member of the public to comment, but it's not just something that's only initiated by the president. You could ask the president, and the president would, could call him that.
Sure, right, right.
That's fine.
Is that what you were?
Yeah, I'm very fine with the protocol. I just want to make sure we all have an opportunity, especially if there were a point in time that there might be a conflicting voice on whatever the issue may be, that it's not just shut down.
Sure.
That all the people, so that's, that's a great point. And I guess, Member Taylor, President Carter, Member Taylor, to your point about the, and my point about the written comments, I would agree with you. I'm thinking more on a few random comments, that I would like to see them be part of the record. But if it's a big controversial issue, and we'll pick on A through F, and there's, you know, 50 in favor and 100 opposed, or vice versa, that would be an appropriate notation, I think, for the record. But every now and again, we just get a couple of random weigh-ins, and I think they should be part of the record.
Yep.
I don't know how you put that in language.
I'm still working on the last one, trying to put it in language. Okay.
President Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
I have some as well. I agree with Superintendent's recommendation on the organization. I think that that is important to know, if an individual is speaking as a private citizen or a representative of another organization. On 4B, the way I read, the president retains the discretion that line. I actually think we should consider removing based on a time constraint of the speaker. If I recall the discussion, it seemed like we wanted to give the president the discretion to determine when an agenda item would fall. And the way I read this, it seems like the time constraint of the speaker is determining when that agenda item might, or when the public comment would go, whether it's during public comment section or preceding the agenda item. I do prefer, on the more controversial topics, or the more complicated topics, having the public comment come right before the agenda item, but I think the president should retain that discretion. And on 4D, I tend to agree with the comments that were just made on the read aloud. I would prefer that they not, if there's a lot of public comment, that they're not read aloud into the record. But I do have a question, then, the way this is currently written, this, the second to the last sentence, where it says, "Written comments will not be distributed at a board meeting." If this were in place today, would the, essentially, the letter that we received today during public comment, this would not have been allowed? Is that accurate?
That's right.
Okay. Although it is difficult to receive this kind of information on the day of the meeting, and to be able to process it, I would rather have this in front of me than not have it. And so if somebody is getting up to make a public comment, and is making this type of robust comment, I would prefer to have it in front of me. So I would not want to prohibit written comments being distributed. And then I'm comfortable with the conversation regarding G.
Okay. Mr. Vice President, any comments?
I have no further words of wisdom.
Okay, so let's just kind of go back through these one at a time, and see if we can reach some agreement now, where we could actually have a motion and move this forward today, or maybe we need to bring it back again for one more review on the 25th. But I'm hearing clear support that we need to retain in three, where it says, "The name of the organization, if any, that the person represents should be left," as it was originally. Then, under 4B, I think we need to have further discussion about, is everything at the front, or is, or are certain things at the, at the point of the calling of the agenda item? Unless we can agree that the president retains the discretion to receive public comment immediately preceding an agenda item, is, is the alternate language, which gives the president that authority. And then the only reason that the term "based on a time constraint of the speaker" is included is because that was a specific example that was given, that raised. Part of this issue was, well, if I can't be there at 9:15, I can't get there until 3:00 in the afternoon. It would be really nice if I contacted the president or the executive director ahead of time, and said, "I can be there by 2:00, and I'd really like to address that." And if the president's aware of it, the likelihood of him moving that agenda item's probably very remote. pretty remote. So that's where that came from. I'm not married to it one way or the other. But if, what do we want to do with that item, based on the time constraint of the speaker? Technically, we could take it out, and I don't think harm anything, because the president still has a discretion about it. That could be the case or not. So, am I hearing consensus to simply remove that?
Strike.
All right. And so by removing that, does that resolve all of the issues around 4B?
Yes.
Which basically means, we're going to try to have people, well, we're going to require people to give public comment at the beginning of the meeting unless the president or the presiding officer, for some reason, does something different. And if we're having a hearing on an item that we know there's going to be a lot of comment, maybe it does make a lot more sense to do that right before that agenda item.
Mr. President, I guess I, once again, kind of like with my point to G, I would like that we have some language that is inclusive of the board, so that if any one of us, you know, want to make that request of you, you know, can we please have this public comment during the actual, because my preference is always that the public comment come during the agenda item, if it's specific to an agenda item. But if there would be a time and reason that it would be a request, that it could come to you from, or to the presiding officer from any board member.
Would you like to suggest what that language would look like?
Public comment immediately preceding the agenda item at the behest of a board member. President retains a discretion to receive public comment immediately preceding a board, an agenda item at the behest of a board member requested by a board member. It's to that effect.
So what if the wording, simply we added it at the end, "We're going to strike based on a time constraint of the speaker," what if we included there, where it would say, "The president retains a discretion to receive public comment immediately preceding an agenda item as requested by a board member?"
Fine with me.
That solves it?
It's fine with me.
So, President Carter, that the intent there would be that, for any comments that any board member would wish to have proceeding a specific agenda item, they would talk to the president and have that cleared through the president. Not that we're going to have every board member
Yeah.
discuss it, right?
Mr. Vice President, that is absolutely correct. Everything should come through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's just a, an appropriate way to keep the public meeting moving well. So what I would anticipate, and again, every president might do this a little differently, but what I would anticipate doing is to say, without exception, all of the comments we made at the beginning of the meeting. And as soon as a board member said, "Well, I'd like to hear them before that agenda item," then that's what we would do at that point. I'm not really, I don't have strong views personally about how we do it, whether it's done at the beginning of the meeting, or whether it's done before the agenda item. I just think we need to be clear as to what the rules are and what the process is. So, yes?
President Carter, I like rules. I also like the president having discretion, because every meeting is different, and every issue's a little bit different. And I'd like the chair to be able to make decisions based on that.
Well, then, based on that, our language isn't going to work, because the first portion of it gives the president the discretion, and the second portion of it gives it to the board member who makes the request.
How about if requested?
Together.
Well, let's just take an issue. An issue comes up, the president has used their discretion not to have that information immediately before an agenda item, and a board member then requests that it is done. Does that still mean that the president is going to rule on that and say, "No"? Or does that mean that the request is going to be honored?
Mr. President, I would expect the request would be honored, or else we'd have to elect a new president.
Okay. Well, okay. That makes perfect sense to me. So I get it. Mr. Vice President, I hope you're listening, because it would apply to you too sooner or later. Okay. I'm good with that. I have no problem with that at all. All right, so I'm thinking that resolves 4B. I think we had already resolved 4C. And under 4D, we probably need to add the same language at the very end. So it might read, "Written comments will not be distributed at a board meeting unless approved by the presiding officer," which we'll go back to Member K's issue. And then, item G, the new item G, I think we could make the same comment at the end of that. Say, "The president may invite a member of the public to comment or make a presentation to the board on any matter under juris- consideration, or if requested by another member through the president." Okay? And then I don't think there were any changes on the back page. Okay. So are we good to vote on this now? I think Catcher has been putting the changes on the board as we've been talking about them. And if everybody's okay with that, then we can go ahead and take care of this today. If you want to bring it back on the 28th and look at it one more time, that's okay, too.
President Carter, before we move on,
Yes.
Can I just get clarification on what the addition to 4G was? We originally had, "On any matter under consideration," I believe you wanted to add, "or..."
"Or if requested by another member through the president." Or if, just "or if requested by another member."
Perfect.
No, let's say, "through the president." I think that makes it clear that it comes through the chair.
Mr. President, do you need to say, "or presiding officer" in the case where you're absent?
We can always use,
Or chair.
We can always substitute president for presiding officer. I'm fine with that.
Either way.
Or through the chair.
Or through the chair.
I still want someone to make an issue that's saying, "Well, there's no president, so therefore, no one can be invited."
Right. So do we prefer presiding officer, or do we prefer chair?
It's a one, half a dozen.
Either one.
How about presiding officer? So we're changing every place where it talks about the president, and we're simply saying the presiding officer?
President Carter, would it be, is it customary to perhaps put a note at the end, or so that it's all covered in every situation, or is it better to write it in with every single?
President Carter, Member Mack, we can do it either way. We could do like a definition at the beginning that says, "President" means the president or presiding officer. Or we could just go through and strike all the references to president and just keep presiding officer. I think the effect is the same.
Any preference? It's easier to do a statement at the beginning, isn't it, for you?
Yes, President Carter.
I don't care. I mean, I think we get there either way.
Just make a note at the beginning, that'd be fine for me.
Okay. So, Catcher, let's just do the one statement at the beginning.
Yes, sir.
So are we ready to vote on this today, or do we want to bring this back?
Mr. President, I'm happy to make a motion.
To approve?
To approve today.
As revised?
As revised.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, I pulled the document just to make sure we don't have anything that's misaligned. I handed a couple of copies around, more than welcome. But I don't see any misalignment here, but it's always nice to have these public comment requests consistent with our policy.
Well, what we would do is we would remove address and city, and everything else would be retained.
Now, I thought about that, Mr. President, if I may. I think in some cases, the board staff may need to follow up with individuals on some comments. So where they may not say it publicly, we may need to retain that, at least on this official record, so we can follow up with them on any concerns or matters. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean it has to be by mail. You know, we are hopefully moving beyond snail mail a little bit, but it doesn't, I don't know, unless we've had some significant security issues with people pulling these, I would say it'd be okay to retain that, but open to other people's comments. Retain address and city.
Well, I understand the concern why there might be people that wouldn't want to put their address or city. But your point is very well taken, that there are situations where we need to follow up. And so I think one of the things that we could do under address and city is just put that that's voluntary, that they may give that to us. The other thing to do, instead of saying, instead of taking out the part about an address, is to say, include the name and a method of contact, or a method for SBE to contact, something along that line, so that, maybe it's a phone number, maybe it's an email address.
Yeah, we don't have email or phone number on here.
Wouldn't have to be the physical address. That's another option.
Because we just need to follow up in some cases, and if there's follow-up information, then that's their preference.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay. My point to that was really more for someone here at the podium having to give out their address in a public way, especially now that we live stream. On here, if someone did a records request, it would be redacted rightfully before it's released. One other comment on that form, too, is I don't think it, I think it would be a good idea if we put that, the statutory disclosure about public comment that we aren't allowed to discuss, and we're not allowed to, I forget which statute number it is.
It's really the posting of
I think we have it on our agenda, but it's a good idea
Right, it's the posting.
Right.
Well, I like the idea of statutory posting. I don't know that you can give that to people too many times.
I think it's actually right there, on number two. That's consistent with what's on our agenda. 38-431.01.
Right, oh, yeah.
I think the letter H might need to be in, that letter H is included in agenda item number one, "Call the public."
So you're thinking just that item right there, we do it?
Yeah, I think the way you have it there covers that request.
Okay, right.
The same home warrant, you can't tell them enough.
Yeah, I would agree. So do we want to leave address and city and just put next to it voluntary?
I'm okay with us even collecting it, as long as, should a public records request be done for those forms?
Okay.
We would, I would, the expectation would be we'd redact it.
Do we need to get
It's less work for staff if it's not on there, but it may, I could see times where it would be necessary.
Mr. President.
So based on that, what do we want to do about the motion in regard to an address? Do we want to remove that, or leave it exactly as it is?
Mr. President, based on Member Taylor's comment, instead of "and address," I think a method of contact would be preferable, and then list on the form that it's voluntary? Or no, we were saying it wasn't voluntary. We would just redact it for public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, my point is, I don't want someone standing at that podium and have to give their street address.
Right. So is the person who made the second and the person who made the motion agreeable with it reading, "Request to speak information shall provide the name and a method of contact of the person?"
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So both the second and the person who made the motion are good with that. All right, any other discussion? And Catcher has the posting piece that will go on the actual orange document. Anything else before we vote on this, Anna? Yes, ma'am?
President Carter, just in clarification, is the addition of "method of contact of the person" going to indicate also that that is optional, providing that information?
Thank you for that question.
I, can we, Mr. President, not to drag this on any longer, but I think, for me, there's two issues here. What we collect on the form and what we expect right there. So maybe staff could bring back a little bit of clarifying language for that, to make it clear to people. I mean, we could make it voluntary on there, and I don't care one way or the other, which way it is. But I want to make it clear to people standing there that they don't have to give out their home address.
Yeah, and I can't recall in my two and a half years on the board, or two years on the board, that we've ever requested that. I think what we've requested of speakers is their name and their title, and the topic upon which they're speaking, and if they're representing a group, what that group is. But we've never
Mr. President,
Yeah.
In terms of location, I'd like to know if they're a resident of the state of Arizona or not. But I don't need to know address and details from them. But it'd be helpful to know, are you a resident of the state of Arizona or not? But that's optional, that's a preference on my side. I'd like to know if they're one of our constituents here that we serve.
Mr. President, I don't disagree with Member Taylor, because even on school board, if someone comes from outside of your district, it does put a little bit different weight, perhaps, on the argument. Maybe if we make the contact voluntary, certainly staff, if there's someone they really think we need to hear back from after their comments, could make sure that we got some kind of contact information. I mean, even if we have an email.
Are you all right with the word voluntary? Where it would be, "And a voluntary method of contact?"
I'm okay with that.
Mr. President, if we just go back to the original wording, that would leave flexibility for the staff to update the supporting documents to support the policy.
So just leave "and address"? Because that was the original
Right, right. Because we're talking about what's presented from here, and then the supporting request to speak, that can change to support what our policy is here that we're setting. Maybe that would keep it a little cleaner and give some flexibility for staff to, I don't want to put a motion that governs a form in policy. The document should support the policy.
Well, but the form has to support the policy. That's why you have the form.
Mr. President,
Mm-hmm.
Could we maybe leave the verbiage the same, and for number three, put, "The request, 'Request to speak information' form shall include this information," if we want it that way? Because that's my whole sticking point, is making sure that we're talking about what's on the form versus what happens at the podium.
Is the maker of the motion in the second good with that?
Yes.
We leave all the rest in.
So, item three would say, "The request to speak information form shall include the name and address." So we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So now I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Moving on to item C, "Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding proposed amendments to Board Rule R-7, R7-2-401 regarding special education standards for public agencies providing educational services." Item number one is to terminate the current rulemaking of proposed amendments to Board Rule R7-2-401 regarding special education standards for public agencies providing educational services.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we verify that Vice President Narducci's still on the phone?
Mr. Vice President, are you still on the phone?
I sure am.
Okay.
Okay, so we still have a quorum. Thank you. I would just draw everybody's attention to the fact that this came from our last meeting, where the discussion centered around, we want to make sure that whatever comes out of this is clean, and that people don't have ongoing arguments to make about the process wasn't wasn't fair and equitable, and that the process somehow was, should nullify what happens. The discussion centered around the fact that we would close rulemaking and then turn right around and reopen the rulemaking with the original documents. And hopefully, that process will run more smoothly and more inclusively this time around. So I would accept a motion on Item C1. Yes, sir?
I move that the Board terminate rulemaking of proposed amendments to Board Rule R7-2-401 regarding special education standards for public agencies providing educational services.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that did, in fact, pass, so thank you very much. All right, so now is there a motion to open new rulemaking? Yes, sir.
I recommend that the Board, or I move that the Board open new rulemaking of proposed amendments to Board Rule R7-2-401 regarding special education standards for public agencies providing educational services.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Very well, that item passed. So that brings us to a point where I just remind everybody that we currently have a meeting scheduled for September 22 at 9:00. That is a study session. And the plan at this point is to try to add about a two-hour strategic planning session following that. So I would anticipate we'll be here most of that day, or at least a good chunk of that day. And then the regular Board meeting on September 25, which also starts at 9:00.
Mr. President, when you say most of that day, what kind of a target do we have? Three, four, five?
Mr. Taylor, as you know, I'm not very good at these targets. I would anticipate that that study session would go two to three hours. I would anticipate. It's conceivable it could go longer. And then I had given staff some direction that we'd try to keep the strategic planning session, and Ken will be here to help us with that.
Okay.
Probably two hours.
We want to get you home for date night that night.
Right, I understand. I get it. So we'll do all of our very best effort to try to get you out of here at a reasonable time.
Very good.
But you know that date could just come for the meeting, and that could be the date. No, okay.
That's how to show a girl good time.
I guess so. All right, folks, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.